Good evening. I call this March 25th, 2025, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Just want to let everyone know that Councilmember I was expected in next few minutes. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Officer Jasmees Thompson is our Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. This evening, I will be leading our invocation. Earlier this month, it was my honor to participate in the groundbreaking for a new temple described as a universal temple, meaning people of all faiths are welcome to attend all events and services hosted there by embracing the spirit of unity that transcends religious boundaries. One of the other participants shared the following hymn, which is considered highly significant in Vedic literature and is still relevant today in organizational and community settings. I found the message positive and uplifting, and I hope that you do too. "May we move forward together, speak together, and may our minds be of one accord. Just as the wise ones of the past united in their shared purpose, may we too work in harmony. May our intentions and resolutions be the same, may our hearts be united. May our thoughts be in agreement so that we may live in harmony and mutual understanding. May our goals be aligned, may our minds and hearts be in unison. May our collective mind be one so that we may work together with strength and unity." Thank you. All who are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Before we adopt this evening's agenda, the Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Okay. Is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's regular agenda? A motion was made by Councilmember Abadi, is seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor of adopting this evening's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda. Approval of February 2025 meeting minutes, resolution approving Chair/Vice Chair appointments for Morrisville Smart City Steering Committee, and a resolution adopting personnel policy revisions. Would any member of the council wish to pull any item for discussion? Or is there a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson and a second from Mayor Protem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero as well. We have five presentations this evening. I will read the first proclamation, which is Recognizing National Child Abuse Prevention Month, at which time, after which, I'll ask Pete Acosta, our chief, and other representatives to come forward. So this proclamation, Recognizing National Child Abuse Prevention Month. "Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility, affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with a social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among residents, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families." Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Morrisville and urges all residents, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Chief, if you'd like to come on up, and representatives from the Child Center, I believe, are in the audience as well. It looks like we have some kind of thing to show as well. So if you want a couple people on one side, a couple people on the other, we'll do a quick photo and then we'll hear from the chief. Sir, anything you'd like to share, and then you'll have an opportunity to. Oh, okay. I believe you.
So I just want to take a quick second to introduce Dina Joy, who is the Executive Director of CAC NC, and Kristin Duranja, who is the Executive Director of Safe Child, who's our CAC in Wake County. And I'm going to just turn it over to them.
Thank you so much, Chief Acosta, and to the mayor as well, for the proclamation. I want to speak to the Town of Morrisville and thank you all so much for your support of children. As the mayor shared, children are the biggest resource to the state of North Carolina and they are the future of this great state that will outlast all of us who stand before you. Last year, the 54 Children's Advocacy Centers across the state of North Carolina provided evidenced informed services for free of charge to 12,000 children who made new disclosures of abuse in 2024. That number is five times over for the number of children that we continue to serve that are awaiting their court case to come forward. Children's Advocacy Centers operate from the core belief that the work that we do must be done in collaboration and in partnership with individuals like the Town of Morrisville and the Morrisville Police Department. It's through that unique collaboration that we can continue to ensure that children receive all of the services that they need, as well as safety and justice for the crimes that have been committed against them. And through that collaboration today, I stand before you and thanks to the Town of Morrisville for speaking up and standing up on behalf of the children here, not only today through this proclamation, but also through their commitment to light the town blue for the month of April, which is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. I also have the great opportunity as the State Chapter to represent all 54 Children's Advocacy Centers, but I would be remiss to tell you that one of my favorites is here in Wake County, which is Safe Child, and you have one of the greatest executive directors for Children's Advocacy Centers, which is Kristin Duranja. And she is here today to share with you the remarkable stories of success here in Wake County that she does in partnership with the Town of Morris.
Can I hold that?
Sure. Thank you, Dina, and thank you, Chief and Mayor. I am thrilled to be here, and most importantly, to say thank you for the opportunity and the honor that you trust in Safe Child to help protect the children and families in your community. We take that near and dear to our heart. And in fact, in terms of heart, the heart and soul of Safe Child's mission is embedded in our name. It's an acronym, and it stands for Stop Abuse for Every Child. Safe Child's connection to the Town of Morrisville is very near and dear. One of my colleagues, who serves as one of our forensic interviewers, who interviews children that come to our center, was a police detective for your town for 13 and a half years. That's how Angie Melis and I originally met. I promise I did not snatch her from your department, but she found her way of other ways of protecting children. And so I asked Angie, can you give me a memorable moment of when you were working with the police department? She talked about a case that involved two girls. One friend was spending the night with the other, and there was a visitor to the family's home. It was actually a relative of the father's. And both of the children, both of the girls, ended up coming to Safe Child for an evaluation because of abuse that happened that night in their own home by people who are supposed to love and protect them most, their own caregivers. The daughter came to Safe Child and was petrified and hid underneath the table and would not talk. However, this was her first step into feeling comfortable enough to disclose later in therapy. The child's friend came to Safe Child and was able to make a full disclosure, which later resulted in a conviction in criminal court. The positive in this was the initial responding officer was aware to only ask minimal questions. And then, when the case was handed off to me as an investigator, I did not interview the child and set up the evaluation at Safe Child so the children could be interviewed appropriately. I will never forget it, because when the case went to trial, I was holding the mother's hand and not, and when she looked down, because her husband sat there and would not look up. She didn't have the support she needed. And so not only did Angie thoroughly investigate that case, but she was there for the caregivers as well. And you may not remember me much later after tonight. I hope you will remember Safe Child, because it's an incredible resource in your community, not only to respond to children and families after abuse has occurred, but to also to provide prevention and education services. So please go to our website, safchildnc.org. And what I hope you will remember, and I'm going to leave with your mayor, this is what we give to each child. So this is what we call a comfort cape at Safe Child. And when we opened our center 15 years ago, I wanted to make sure there was something that every child left with that made them feel heard and believed and treasured and comforted. And I thought, what's the first thing a baby receives when they come into this world that makes them feel protected and secure? And it's that little blanket in the hospital where they're swaddled and they're nestled in that little blanket. So every child, and you can take that as a memory of what you help us achieve, receives a comfort cape. And so I hope you will think about ways that you too can be a comfort for children in your community.
Thank you so much.
Very quickly. So I'm Detective Sergeant Zachary Graddy, and I wanted to reach out and speak to everybody here tonight. Excuse me. A few things I would like to remind everybody about. The month of April is Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month, and part of Child Abuse Prevention Month is recognizing the month with the color blue. April 4th is National Wear Blue Day. Whether you're at home, you're at work, whatever it may be, whatever you're doing, encourage you to wear the color blue while you go out and about for your day. Going along with the theme of the color blue, the Morrisville Police Department will be wearing blue badges for the whole month. So if you see us wearing blue badges, it looks a little bit different than what we traditionally wear, but we'll be wearing those in remembrance. Additionally, I'm going to let Detective Campbell speak to you guys and extend the invitation for our pinwheel ceremony.
All right, so the pinwheel ceremony will be April 17th at 10:00 a.m. They'll be there at 101 Town Hall Drive, over at the Indian Creek... Did you say Creek Trailhead? What he said, the Creek Trailhead. But yeah, we just wanted to extend that invitation for you guys to come out there and plant some pinwheels. The pinwheels will be recognizing the childs that have been abused.
Thank you all very much. Don't go far, Chief Acosta, because now I'm going to ask you and Sergeant Laurie Strickland forward to recognize recent graduates of the Community Police Academy. Chief Acosta and Sergeant Strickland, if you want to come forward to recognize the recent graduates of the Community Police Academy, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here and congratulate all of our graduates tonight. You all know Sergeant Strickland. Sergeant Strickland oversees this program, has done a remarkable job. So I'm going to turn it over to her real quick.
Yeah, he told me that like 15 minutes ago, so. So just a couple of little talking points that I made when he gave me a little warning. So this was our 7th Annual Community Academy. We started on February 4th, and we met every Tuesday evening for a couple of hours for different classes. We went over things such as K-9, drones, CIT. They got to visit our dispatch center, as well as Wake County Forensics. They got a lot of information from our SWAT team and many other... They got to participate in mock traffic stops, which I think made a big impression on a lot of them. So those are just some of the things they got to do. If you don't know, the Community Academy is designed to educate residents about the functions and operations and responsibilities of our local law enforcement agency. The goal of the Community Academy is to foster positive relationships between law enforcement and the community, hoping to build a stronger, safer community. With that, I want to speak specifically about this class. This is the first one that I got to set up and run, and I know we had growing pains, and there'll be some changes that I get to make, but this class has been extraordinary. You guys have been wonderful. I'm going to steal a little quote from one of my favorite TV shows. It's Ted Lasso. If you haven't watched it, you should. But Ted Lasso was going through a little bit of adversity, and he mentioned a quote that he saw by Walt Whitman that said, "To be curious and not judgmental." So I want to appreciate all of you, and thank you for being curious and not judgmental, for being curious to learn what we do day in and day out, and what it takes to do what we do, instead of being judgmental and basing what you see on the media for the five seconds that they run a body camera. So thank you for being curious and not judgmental. And I encourage all of us in our daily life to be a little more curious and a little less judgmental. So thank you. All right. Thankfully, you guys were nice enough to let me just do first names. Appreciate you. First is going to be Abhi Shek. Atul. Dipali. Elizabeth. Joe. Kathleen. Prabhu. Priscill. Priya. Who couldn't watch it and show up? Si. And Suda.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the whole police department, and anyone who approved it had anything to do with it. I know I wasn't planning on talking, but I do want to make sure you guys know we appreciate you guys doing this, because it is... We learned a lot throughout the whole class, and everyone was very supportive of us learning this, so great. Thank you.
We do love unprompted kudos. That's always great. Okay. The next proclamation is recognizing Women's History Month and Women in Public Office, and will be read by Councilmember Scruggins Johnson.
Okay, I'm going to wait just a few... I mean, there's a lot of... Little bit. We're letting the room clear just a little bit. Lot of happy, happy voices.
Fantastic. I'm very honored to read the proclamation tonight for recognizing Women's History Month and Women in Public Office. Whereas March is a time to celebrate women's history and the significant contributions women of all races, classes, ethnicities, and backgrounds have made to the world. March and National International Women's Day, or International Working Women's Day in both national and global organizations, celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, and issued a call to action for accelerating women's equality. And whereas, Women in Public Office Day was celebrated on March 19th, recognizing and honoring the achievements and contributions of women serving in political roles. This day highlights women's dedication and impact on society, along with the challenges women in public office face, and promotes greater gender equality and political representation. This day encourages awareness of and the importance of diversity in leadership and the need for equal opportunities in political domains for women worldwide. And whereas, women have and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every element of the life of our nation, making up a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. While the 20th century was a pivotal time of growth for women entering politics, they remain underrepresented in the male-dominated fields, and it is important and imperative to provide opportunities to support women in public office. And whereas, women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and have served our country courageously in the military. Despite these contributions, the role of women in history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas, recognizing women in public office brings awareness to the fundamental necessity of their work and should inspire others to serve their communities. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize March 2025 as Women's History Month, acknowledging International Women's Day and Women in Public Office Day in Morrisville, urging all people to unite in support of the success of women in public office and beyond, and to celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, recognizing the generations of women who have left enduring imprints on our history. Signed by Mayor TJ Crowley. I didn't say Crowley, anyways. I would like to invite the women of the Town Council to come forward for a picture. This was not... and staff. And staff. This was not notified to you beforehand, so thank you for your flexibility. I know, Ann's looking really excited there.
So if all the female staff would also join us up front, that would be wonderful. And if one of the male staff could take the camera from rocks so she could be in the picture, that would be wonderful. Hey Steve, good to see you. You let us know, it's fine. Let's have a hand for all the... At this time, Councilmember Johnson will read the last proclamation of the evening, recognizing Local Government Budget and Finance Professionals Week. And we have Byron Hayes, our CFO, in attendance to receive it.
So this proclamation recognizes April 7th through April 11th, 2025... I just realized I didn't put my mic back. This proclamation recognizes April 7th through April 11th of 2025 as Local Government Budget and Finance Professionals Week. Whereas the diligent efforts of local government budget and finance professionals significantly contribute to the town's overall financial sustainability and strategic goals. And whereas these professionals often work behind the scenes to provide guidance and leadership to the organization in the alignment of resources that support the vision and mission of the community. And whereas, through their expertise in strategic planning, forecasting, analysis, reporting, and overall management, they work tirelessly to ensure the transparency and fiscal responsibility of the town in the delivery of essential services and the realization of capital investments. And whereas, their efforts serve to successfully uphold the town's high standards of accountability and compliance to local government budgets and fiscal controls, in addition to maintaining strong town financial policies evidenced by the town's AAA credit rating. And whereas, we acknowledge the critical role our budget and finance professionals provide in safeguarding taxpayer dollars to achieve operational excellence, engaging the community to understand its priorities, and collaborating to plan for the future. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim April 7th through April 11th, 2025 as Local Government Budget and Finance Professionals Week in the Town of Morrisville. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to all budget and finance professionals, both past and present, serving the town through our core values of dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. And so I'm going to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Byron Hayes, to come forward and accept this proclamation. And Byron, you have lots of folks from your staff. Do you want them all to come forward too, I'm sure? Yes.
I really, I appreciate it. Now, I don't have a lot to say. I do just want to thank the council for this recognition, as well as our senior leadership. I really do appreciate the fact that you all took the time to recognize the financial services staff tonight. I could stand up here, and that's wonderful, but they're the ones that really make this place run, and they're the ones that really get this work done. And I'm very appreciative of you all, as is, I imagine, the rest of our staff as well. So thank you all. I appreciate it.
At this time, I'd also like to acknowledge that Councilmember Rao arrived during the proclamations. Do you have anything that you want to share about a possible conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest on any agenda, on the agenda, sir?
I have no conflict of interest, and sorry.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Our last presentation of the evening is a Town Center District update. We invite Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, forward to deliver the update. Oh, there you are.
We try to be timely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, together with Kyle Cooper, our Capital Products Manager. We're going to tag team a bit. Kyle will probably give the majority of the presentation, but I wanted to do a little introduction before we get started. You know, this is an overview of the Town Center, an update of where we are and what the team has been working on over the last six months since the last time we came in front of you. In general, we're moving through the final design and all of our regulatory plan approvals. We're verifying costs, and we're preparing for construction commencement in late summer. You're going to see a number of artist renderings throughout the presentation. It's a general representation... It's a general representation. Some of the details are not exact to the design, but it's a general representation of the artwork. So that, those are the pictures you'll see. I think it was better for the presentation of colored pictures versus our black and white design drawings, which everybody probably falls asleep halfway through. So with that said, we're going to get started. If you have any questions or comments, if you could please hold them to the end just to make it a little easier for us to get through the presentation, would be appreciated. If not, we'll take them either way, and it'd be appreciated either way. So I'll let Kyle go ahead and get started, and then I'll jump in as we go. Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. Can y'all hear me okay? Excellent. So I'm going to give you kind of a, like Mark was saying, I'm going to give you a high-level tour of the main changes that we've had thus far in the site plan development, and then I'll dig into each of the individual areas of the site. So some of the main design adjustments that we've had since September, it had been, the first one is that we are tweaking the location of this sidewalk that was over here at the roundabout. We're pushing that one up a little bit north to kind of tie in where the pedestrian access is from the parking deck over to here. That's to improve safety for the pedestrians, and also just to help improve flow for the site. We are also adding in a pedestrian crossing on Town Hall here to tie in with the Indian Creek Greenway over here. Again, to help make it easier for the pedestrians to kind of get in and out of the town green area. We have also been working with Kim Lee Horn and saying to adjust the plaza grading and the walkway orientations up here where the water sculptures are to help better define the space and make it easier for people to get into the town green zone. And we are currently evaluating adding additional electrical outlets to accommodate special events and other needs throughout the site, such as the setting up for concerts and other special event needs as parks and recreation needs. We are working on adjusting the footprint for the cottage retail and the support buildings to kind of help make them a little bit more consistent with the overall style and theme of the Town Center. And then we are also evaluating adding additional heavy-duty concrete all the way around the town green circle. Currently, we've got, we've got heavy-duty concrete that extends on the western side of the circle to allow for public works and maintenance and fire if they need to, to be able to access through that side. But we're looking at adding some additional into here. And then we are also looking at future-proofing for sustainability initiatives on some of the support buildings, such as for solar and for other sustainability initiatives moving forward in the future. And then lastly, we are looking at selection of site lighting across the site, so that includes the street lighting, and also the town-owned color-changing lighting that's being discussed throughout the site. And I'll talk about that a little bit in future slides. So getting into the town green, overall design has not changed significantly since the last time that we presented this. The main thing are, again, minor adjustments to the surrounding in pathways and amenities and the plaza zone, and a couple of slight tweaks in the wooded area over here to help preserve trees and also to help just increase the flow. We are also evaluating, we're also evaluating additional trees on the inner ring of the town green. Been discussing that back and forth, depending on how things go with budget. For the cottage retail, that are these four buildings around here. The restroom's in the middle over here. The primary side in the primary use area will be facing town green. So the main windows and the main service areas will be on this particular walkway into here. As I mentioned before, we're evaluating town-owned lighting to help with color-changing lights, LED lights. And the idea behind that is to be able to use that for year-round town events and theme them for those settlements. The hardscape down here, we're working on making sure that there's enough space in between the cottage retail and down here in the southern part over here to allow for additional seating and lounging space just to be able to activate those zones a little bit further. And then lastly, we are looking at, we're planning on using natural turf on the town green and evaluating using the underdrain system and irrigation on that to help make sure that the grass stays green, so. This slide is talking a little bit about the hardscape that is being evaluated. It's mainly on Foxglove right now. We've been working with Singh and Kim Lee Horn to develop the paper selection. Here, these are the color of paper samples that we've been discussing for the Foxglove Drive Extension. And these images here are kind of showing what that is from aerial view and from the, just from the section profile. So for Carolina Street, we are aiming to have papers on the sidewalk areas and asphalt in the road zones. The next slide is digging into the furnitures and the fixtures. So first, the first thing I'm going to talk about is the streetlights. So the existing streetlights that the town use, we have the Cobraheads that we use along Town Hall Drive, and we have the Global Dome-style fixtures that we use in the town neighborhoods. Both of these are Duke Energy fixtures. And what we've been, and what we've been kind of assessing is utilizing some more contemporary-style Duke fixtures in around Town Center. We ended up going through the videos of the previous work sessions that you all did, and we noticed that there seemed to be kind of a consensus for this downward-facing gus neck one. And we've also, we've been having some discussions back and forth with Singh, Kim Lee Horn, and staff. And we are, like, the top option here is kind of what we felt matched well with some of these other amenities that we've kind of been exploring in on-site. So for that as well. This is, we've also been selecting Baludes here, and kind of matched well with that contemporary style. We're still in high-level select, we're still working through some high-level selections of the benches, the bike racks, and the trash cans. But we heard it said in the previous work sessions that you all are looking for a unique choice for the Town Center. So that's what we've been, that's what we've been exploring to try to get to that theme. As a last note, the street furniture, like these chairs and tables, is aimed to be able to be movable so that if people want to be able to set up their own groupings, they can adjust that as needed, so. And we, as a side note, we are still working on the details of the town-owned fixtures for the color-changing lights, so still trying to work out the details for that. This next slide goes into the playground plaza at Carolina and Foxglove. So the main adjustments to this one have been tweaking the shape and location of the retaining zone, of the retaining walls and the main pathways that go through this plaza to help provide access and just make, just kind of better define the space a little bit better. We've been talking about the Holiday Tree Lighting Zone, and right now, the consensus is to have it closest to the intersection to make it better visible and just have it be sort of a highlight spot in that area. So these two pictures kind of show the overall view of what it would look like from both the intersection and from the town green walking loop. There's about a four-foot, just as a note, there's about a four-foot grade change difference from up here at the intersection to down on the town green. But Singh and Kim Lee Horn have worked very, very hard to make sure that this is an ADA-accessible pathway into the zone, and that is easily movable into these areas, so. The next slide that I have is talking about the Pocket Park on Carolina Street. This is this zone that's right next to the mixed-use building over in the Block A area. So we've been tightening up the, we've been tightening up the details in this zone here. So we're having outdoor dining and gathering zones up along the frontage along Carolina Street and in this area here for the pedestrian access in between the library and the mixed-use building. We have a green space with built-in seating here with planned artificial turf in this zone here just to kind of have people give a gathering space in here, be able to kick their feet back and relax a little bit. The main pedestrian access is going to be in through this area up into the parking deck and through here. And we've got plenty of seating and plenty of other, we've got string lighting, plenty of seating, trying to give a good ambiance in the zone just to kind of help make that a pleasant space for people to walk through. And then lastly, we've got the crosswalk that would connect into the town green over here. You had, okay, all right, that's good. And then this slide is kind of touching on the playground a little bit. We have been discussing the overall servicing for the playground, and we nailed on a, some colors choices and the playground equipment selection for the site. So we've been, we've been going with more of a natural color choice to be able to kind of blend in with the surrounding grass and the surrounding nature a little bit better. And we've also selected durable, unique wooden play equipment just to give it like a, just blend in with the, just blend in with the surrounding trees, make it a kind of a cohesive playground site, so to speak. We've also selected some movable furniture options for the patrons to be able to gather in these zones around the playground and kind of converse and just kind of socialize while the kids are playing, so. This next slide is going into the amphitheater and the stage. So there's been a couple of slight adjustments to this, and the main one being that we've dropped the height a little bit in order to be able to meet BioCode requirements. And we are also making sure that we can future-proof for security cameras, IT needs, just to kind of help plan ahead for the future to be able to accommodate events. We are also making sure that we keep an open stage configuration to serve both the main town green and the backside in the groves, which is the, which is the main sort of picnic slash, say, the tree seating area behind the stage. If you need to see that, I can scroll back up at the end of the slide to kind of showcase where that's at, so. And then this is talking about the cottage retail, which is, which are these four buildings here around, on this loop here. The restroom building is located in between all four of these buildings. We have been discussing about the building footprint for the cottage retail, just kind of adjusting that a little bit, rounding some of the corners in order to kind of have it fit better with the overall shape language of the Town Center. Right now, the interior design is still in flux, but the idea is that we would have a shell concept with sort of glass seating areas on either side that would be facing out towards the main entrance pathways in these zones here, just to kind of help give a little bit of visual interest in that area. There is enough room down here to be able to allow for outdoor dining on these two southern, like, southern cottage retail areas. And the idea is that we would have sort of primary service windows facing the town green to allow for easy food takeaway if they needed to just order like a cup of coffee or something, that they don't necessarily have to go into buildings. They could just order it right in the front there and be able to go on their way, so. The restroom building, we've been working on finalizing some of the material, building material details to meet the UDO requirements during the plan review. So I've pulled a couple of screenshots from previous presentations about what the materials and selections for the exterior and interior would look like. We, so right now, we're looking at brick, precast concrete, and bonds for the exterior here. You can see where we're rounding the corners in order to kind of help with the pedestrian flow and give a little bit of visual interest for the, like, for the exterior here. And we are also having a mix of the multi-user restrooms, and we are also planning on having single, like, family restroom units in on the restrooms as well, just to give enough flexibility for people that are using the site. This particular slide is just showcasing some of the material selections that we've landed on for the interior restrooms, trying to give a nice clean feel to it, making sure that we are using neutral colors, making sure that it's easy to maintain, but still giving more of a refined feel for this particular location. The support building, similar to the restrooms, we are working on finalizing the building exterior to meet UDO code requirements. We're also coordinating to make sure that we're providing enough water and irrigation connections for public works and the farmers market to be able to use, and the education garden to be able to use to help service the, help service the plants and make sure that they're properly watered. I'll talk about the education garden in a second. The architectural facade is, again, intended to be consistent with the restroom building and the retail cottages. So you can see here in this plan here, we've basically got it separated into several different rooms here. This is the green room and the toilet intended to be for the use of this, like, when they've got concerts, utilize that for the stage and make sure that the performers have a place to be able to go to get ready. We also have general storage here planned for the park, pool storage here planned for the education garden, and a prep counter for people at the education garden to be able to use, make sure that they can properly get things going during the weekly events, so. This slide goes into a little bit more on the education garden, and the idea is that we would fence in the area around the garden, similar to how we have it in the existing farmers market, next to the, next to the support building. So the prep counter and wash building would be here, easily accessible for garden use. And this particular image showcases the architectural six-foot steel fencing that we're looking into being, having surround the garden to provide the visual interest on the site. The accessory building and trash enclosure. So we are currently working through some interior design adjustments for the trash enclosure and the storage building to help meet the requirements for public works. We're also working through some of the details for the dumpsters. Originally, we were looking at utilizing, like, smaller individual dumpsters. We've been coordinating with the town to carry, and we went on a, we actually went on a site visit to the town to carry to take a look at how they handle their dumpster enclosure. And we're looking into the possibility of having some larger dumpsters, like, some longer-length dumpsters on that to help improve the amount of trash that we can handle in on the site and make sure that it's feasible for the town and for the cottage retail to be able to use. So we're still working through some of the overall design details for the stuff. As it stands right now, the trash enclosure may end up becoming an open-air structure, and we may keep the roof over the storage building. Just working through the, just working through a couple of the details as budget allows, so kind of get through that with Singh and Kim Lee Horn. This slide is talking a little bit about the current schedule. So for the Singh-Montech family building, the mixed-use building structure itself has finished the site plan review, and the current, the current schedule is calling for groundbreaking to happen in either June or July of 2025. For the Pocket Park and the temporary library parking lot, that first review was completed in early March, and Singh and Kim Lee Horn are working through some of the staff comments that have come up with the Pocket Park and the parking lot, temporary parking lot, and we're aiming to have that resubmitted hopefully sometime in April. For the Block C Town Center Green, that is looking more like that is going to happen in, for a recent middle, it's going to happen in April based on the design adjustments that we're currently working through with Singh and Kim Lee Horn, just to make sure we give them enough time to be able to respond to the comments and solidify things for the next round of review. Again, Singh is finalizing the cottage retail design, and we are still currently anticipating a site plan approval by the end of July of 2025. For construction, we are currently still on track for groundbreaking in August, so. I'm going to turn it back over to Mark so he can discuss some of the branding signage we're finding.
Thanks, Kyle. So just to kind of go back out to a helicopter level and talk about the entire Town Center District, we have prepared and advertised a branding signage and wayfinding RFQ. It's currently advertised now on our website. We're looking to start working on this program so we can have the appropriate signage and wayfinding for vehicles, for pedestrians, for users of the Town Center, whether you're coming in from the outside and coming to Town Center, or if you're a pedestrian, once you're in Town Center, to navigate through the area. So we're currently working on that, so we'll certainly be bringing back more details to the council about that. But I did want to bring that up as part of our Town Center update. And just a quick refresher reminder, there is a, in our long-range plan, we do have the town center district identified. There's a number of, there's a critical mass area that's identified, we're considering expansion of that area, but take, fly with me a little bit just to talk about the district. You know, we've got town center is going to start very soon. We have other amenities that are in progress, the dog park is under construction. We have a constructed wetland, which we'd like to do some additional enhancements to it, like add a fountain and some other things to it. We have our Indian Creek Trailhead, we have a veterans memorial sometime in the future coming. We have a playground also at the Indian Creek Trailhead, so we have additional amenities there. We have the pew house, which we're still looking at things that we want to do with that. I think long-term, we'd like to do something else with the fire administration building, maybe another opportunity for, for some draw to the area. We have the Sawmill Creek Stream Restoration Project, which will also include a new greenway connection that'll run on the east side of the district. So we have a number of redevelopment opportunities and we're also looking at pedestrian enhancements and other better connectivity for us just overall through the district. But I think it's good to look at this and remember there's not only the district that we're building right now, the town center green and some of those amenities, but the overall district and how that will come into play over the future. I'll let you take the rest of the call.
So one of the things that has come up during the town center design and discussions is we're, like, town staff has been looking at potentially, well, we're looking, we're discussing the idea of potentially renaming Carolina Street and the Foxglove Extension to be something more in line with how the town center is used as a social district and maybe calling Carolina Street something like Town Soon Away and Foxglove Extension, Town Green Lane, just to kind of theme it a little bit better. We just wanted to bring that up with you all, see what your thoughts were on that. I mean, I've got a section for questions at the end, but we just kind of wanted to at least bring that up with you all and see what, if you had feelings one way or another about potentially doing like a street renaming as the project goes on. Last slide, I believe, here is the Hermann communication plan. So we will be working, so we will be working to make sure that the surrounding residents and HOAs are very, like, are very informed of the project. And so first things first, we will have an update meeting with the area residents and HOAs prior to the construction. And the, we will also do a mail-out before construction starts of the notifications, what residents can expect, how long things may happen. And if there's any weekend work or like heavy nuance activities that are anticipated, we will notify them, we will notify the HOAs beforehand via email so that they can spread the word out to the residents. We will also work with communications to give social, social media outreach and make sure that they have regular updates on how things are going with the project. And we will make sure that the contractor is adhering to the working hours and that they do not go over the working hours unless they have a very good reason to. And then road and sidewalk closures, we will notify in advance for any, any road, like road closures and any delays that may be caused by that. And then lastly, we will have visual message boards to be utilized for the road closures and kind of notify drivers of any important updates or pedestrians of any important updates for the project. And that's the last slide that we had, so we can open up the floor for questions and talk it out.
If I could just make one more comment, so the street renaming that slide, we're not suggesting, those are the names, we're just saying that we're open to the idea and wondering if you're open to the idea, so.
Sounds great. First with their signal up was Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender. So Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, just taking the points kind of in backwards order. The mail and email outreach for the road closures and the road and sidewalk closures, I would really strongly suggest that we get some type of plan where people could opt into text updates for these items. I, I mean, I will literally get an email two days after the road closes and I'll never read a snail mail. So, and I think that I'm honestly pretty typical in that regard. So if there is a way that people could opt into text updates for those, for those updates, I think that would be a really important communication vehicle.
That's a great idea and we'll absolutely deploy that, we've used it at Morseville Carpenter and we can use it again here.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, so done. The street renaming, I, I think it's, I mean, I'm fine with it, I think it would be, I think it would probably be cool, but to be honest with you, it's not a hill that I'm willing to die on. I would ask the residents what they think, if there's no vociferous objections, then great, let's go ahead, but I don't, you know, I, I don't want to force a street name change on people that don't want it. That, that feels kind of like a vanity project to me, so I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be absolutely heartbroken if that doesn't happen. And then I'm calling your attention to slide 10 here. How, how close are we? Is this the look and feel of the cottage retail? Because I have to be honest with you, I find this to be very dull and bland and not, and I, and I don't really understand this concept of the, like, just the food windows facing out onto the town green. Like, I'm, I'm hoping that not every single one of these cottage retail buildings is going to be a food establishment and there's going to be other things there too. So, and, and I think that they look kind of industrial. And I, I would like it better if there was like glass in the front and they looked inviting and more interesting.
So that's a good question and I, I tried to mention it, so these are just very generic artist renderings. The cottage retail, it's not going to be a beige plain building, there, there are more details and things that haven't been worked out yet.
Maybe going to be some windows there.
Yeah, it'll be more glass that you can't see in the imagery here. So the, the cottage retail is still being developed, in all fairness.
Okay.
So we just, we didn't have anything better to show, so we wanted to put something in color, but they are still in process.
Gotcha, I just want to.
In all fairness, they're not going to look so vanilla.
Yeah, I just want to raise my objection to that.
They walk curved corners because they're trying, we're trying to tie it in, but that's probably the only thing that you can grab from that.
Love the rounded corners, that's fine, just, you know, I, this is not at all, just this like color scheme and the lack of windows and it doesn't look very inviting and it's just not at all my vision for the cottage retail.
Understood.
So as long as we're on the same page there. And then just one more thing, which was on page two. So, uh, two, yeah, so evaluating future proofing for sustainability initiatives doesn't exactly fill me with confidence that we're aggressively pursuing opportunities to make this project a beacon of sustainability that I was hoping that it was going to be. So, you know, I would, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're all on the same page here because I feel like we've been saying that since the very beginning. Like, at one point, we talked about living walls and I, I mean, I thought there were going to be solar panels on everything flat, maybe, maybe I'm wrong there, but I did think there were going to be a lot of solar panels. And I heard a reference to like solar panels on one building. So would you mind just explaining to me what the fundamental, what the fundamental philosophy about this project being a sustainability-inspired project you're going forward with? Like, what is, in your view, what's the role of the sustainability measures in this project?
So we are still evaluating the opportunities for solar on the different rooftops. To be quite frank, some of them are kind of small, so they don't really provide a lot of great electrical output for the solars on top of, as an example, I'm just talking about that, that one example. So we're still trying to find out the best way to do that, if it's, if it's put it here or put it, put more somewhere else that we can get a better opportunity from. We are working towards trying to meet the sustainability goals of, of the town that we have already implemented and you've heard from Kimberly many times, I'm sure. But we're still, that's kind of on the final stages, so we're still working through those details of sustainability. I don't have a really good answer because we've been working on so many other things that that's, those are kind of, I don't want to call them accessories, but they're kind of like, they're towards the tail end of our design, so we're still working through those details.
Okay, I'm not really viewing those as accessories, I'm, I'm viewing them as fundamental to the project, just to be clear. And another thought that I had was I've seen this in different places where the solar panels are up high and they're actually providing shade of parking areas, of seating areas. So, you know, let's, I mean, let's not be afraid to like push the envelope on what we're doing sustainability-wise.
Understood.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. I think I'll start with the cottage retail and we'll go in reverse order, I guess. So to me, the cottage retail would be more inviting, such as Councilmember Robati said, but I see this as a possible place where you'd have different business types. So flexibility in its footprint so that you could have a restaurant style, but you also could have a boutique or something like that. So we have to design those buildings so that they do have the flexibility of occupying different types of boutique kind of places. Over time and trends, there'll be different opportunities and different interest in how the town center evolves. So I, I like the idea of having, you know, the ability to provide food during a concert, but that's not the only purpose of the cottage retail. So just look at different options, I guess, for that. The second point I have is about the potential renaming of the street to further support the wayfinding and other items. The Carolina Street, to me, has some historical significance to the town. And so I would like to know more about when it was, you know, created, what is the history, is there some tie to historic significance for Carolina Street? I think that we need to respect and honor some history, we have the pew house and maybe that will tie in, in the wayfinding and identity as well. The, the Foxglove Drive, I don't believe has a lot of history, that was named as part of the new development. So I'm not as, you know, tied to that, but the Carolina Street, I do believe, would have some longstanding history, so let's maybe research that before we come back again, that would be very helpful. The last thing that I wanted to discuss and, and get some reaction to is the communication plan. As you probably are aware, the council is very sensitive to how we communicate to neighbors. And I will share that the Morrisville Carpenter Road email and text updates strategy was very helpful for residents. I know my community was affected and there was many communities affected all throughout the town hall in Morrisville Carpenter Road corridor that were able to navigate different downtimes. And I, and I caution that you kind of look at which are the proximate neighborhoods because I tell you, this is the heart of our town and I think we need to alert every HOA in our town. I think we need to look at Twin Lakes, they are stakeholders. They also have residents, you know, of Cary along Town Hall Drive. So it might behoove us to also let Cary know what is going on in our communication plan. I think we need website, a, a home, and this is where Rox is designing some more of our website, but we need a home for town center updates so that people can go and seek information on our website on a regular basis. It would be nice if we also got some push notifications, but that's a pull. We, social media has a lag in, in, depending on how frequently you look at the town information. So for that reason, I think we also need to have some physical signs. And I know we've done that for races and events, you know, Town Hall Drive closed on Saturday, blah, blah, blah. We need to have those physical signs when you're going to be doing some construction off hours or if you're going to be doing that during the weekend time. So I do like opting into those alerts, but I, I think that the initial push should be townwide plus Cary, you know, kind of things. But that's, that's all I have, thank you very much for a great update.
If the council will allow me, I'd like to bring Todd Rankin from Sing to offer some feedback about the cottage retail, just to answer two of your questions.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
Thanks Mark, thanks Kyle. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to just address a couple of the things that came up here tonight, starting with the cottage retail. So as was said, we're still working out the final design, but right now, the way things are going, every cottage retail would have its, the same footprint. So there's four buildings that all have the same footprint. And it is a little unfortunate, we do have better three-dimensional imagery, but they didn't have color, we just didn't think it was appropriate. What, what you were missing on the one with the rounded corners, just on the, like on this side of that view, was a, a whole entire glass side, so. It's, it's right off to the left there and. Yeah, you can, you can see it here, this is a little bit better, can I zoom in? Yeah, let's do that. So you can see, what you were seeing before was like, it was kind of cut off right to here. So this side is all glass, we are looking at, you know, this is just kind of an option for like a walk-up window, a service window, or this could go to the ground and this whole thing be glass. This was just an idea for a canopy and signage for there. So you can kind of see how this front would possibly look. So that you've got glass on, on both sides and then what this would do also is going back to a plan, so I'll take, I'll zoom in here. So what you were looking at was kind of like a rounded corner and I don't think these footprints match the design right now, but, but the, the glass is on the side and then there's a rounded corner and what you were seeing was, was in here and then on that face there and this face here is where the sign in the window, the walk-up window was. But this is all glass, one-on-one, and as you walk through, it's all going to be glass and lit up and you'd be able to see into here and through. And then up along the restroom building would be the same, so you'd have glass up along here, we'd have the strong lights overhead. And then you saw what the restroom building was starting to look like. And the idea between all of this is we've spent a lot of time looking at these connection points coming through from Foxglove, through these buildings, down this step and onto the, the lawn. So while it, it, it kind of looks the way we're showing it here, there's been a lot more thought given and, and it's going to be much more open to what's going on inside. So it's not going to be just, just masonry walls and flattened and boring. I did also want to just touch on the sustainability. We've been looking quite a bit at the solar aspect and as Mark was mentioning, there's not a ton of flat roofs and as soon as you start getting into like HVAC that takes up roofs and then the, the canopy, which from the very, shouldn't say very beginning, but for quite a while now, it had this kind of an organic shape to it that had some, some roundedness to it and I can, yeah, there, you can see how it's sort of, it's kind of twisted a bit. This shape really does not allow solar panels to be installed on them. And solar panels, we've worked with a company Strategic Energy Solution, I'm sorry, strategic, I don't know, I'm getting my companies confused, Southern Energy Management, my apologies. The town has used Southern Energy Management as well on solar projects around the town. And what we're, what we're determining with Southern Energy Management and our electrical engineers is there's not a ton of electrical demand here, when you really kind of peel it back. You know, the restroom building, the support building, there's not a ton of energy being used here. Sure, you're going to have a high demand when there's like a, an event, but with roofs that have solar and the one building that we're looking at primarily is the, is the storage building, I think I went the wrong way. The storage building is the one that we, we did talk specifically on, oh, I'm sorry. Kyle knows where these are. There we go. So that's the one that we were primarily focused on and we actually took the, the roof and we put it on an angle that would. And we actually took the roof and we put it on an angle that would complement the, where the panels would need to go and the angle for the sun. But it's, it's, the demand isn't there for the cost of the solar panels. And so we're still trying to work through what that cost is and what the offset would be for the demand. And the demand is, is not as high as you may think for, for electrical. So we're still working through that, but that's where we're at. It's, it's not that we're not doing anything with sustainability and solar. It's just that it has to make sense also.
We were at Councilmember Fender's questions at this time, because I believe Councilmember...
Yes, please.
And then Councilmember Rapp.
So before you go, I guess I had a couple of questions for you that I wanted... So you said there's not much electrical demand, but then Mark Spann always said the roofs are small. So I think there could be a, a design realized... You know, you're saying there's not much electrical demand, but at the same time, you're saying the roof is too small. So to me, that means the roof, the size of the roof should be sufficient for the electrical demand that you have. And then my other point is too, there are other sustainability initiatives that you can incorporate in your cottage retail than just solar. So how are you incorporating sustainability in your cottage retail design?
We really haven't gotten to the final parts of the design because we don't really have users.
See, that really scares me that you're not thinking about it upfront.
Well, there are...
And you're considering it at the tail end.
Well, sure. I think there are initiatives for daylight harvesting with all the glass that we have. So, you know, the, the light usage could be less. The demand for lighting inside would be less with the glass that we have. They could do different things with water. But let's just say you've got a bike shop in there. They don't really have water. They don't have much waste, but they may need more lighting for the workshop. And then if it's a bakery, they might have different, different needs. So I think, you know, as we get into the users, we will look at, at different things of being efficient with sustainability and water and waste and lighting and electrical. So I, I think it's, when we get into those users, we would, we would format those kinds of things. And as far as, just wanted to touch on the roof sizes. Solar panels, they work best when you can put a field together. When there's a couple here and a couple there, they become very inefficient because of the conduits and the wiring that you're running just for a couple. We have plenty of roof to fill the demand for the, for the electrical that's being used, but it's almost overkill. And I, I might be speaking a little bit out of turn because I'm neither a specialist in solar or an electrical engineer. But that's why I, like I said, we're still working through that right now just to see, is there, is there a benefit to doing that? Is the cost that's going into it worth the offset of it?
Okay. Well, I highly encourage you to put more priority on it rather than dismissing it. I do think there are initiatives that can be done. And I don't know all the solutions, certainly. But I do think there are things that can be looked at ahead of time that can be incorporated from the beginning rather than waiting until the very end of the design and deciding, oh, well, we can't do this now because, you know, we're 90% into the design. I'm just not feeling really confident. And it's the other thing. I actually had a whole list of things I wanted to bring up, but it's gotten me interested in this. So this is why our master sustainability plan has in 2027 as a goal in our timeline, research green building standards for policies, adopt green standards for town projects. And that's not till 2027. And then it's still not till 2028, draft recommendations for policies and adapting green standards for town projects. And this is why Jeremy, I mean, not Jeremy, Jeffrey and Brandon, I have been, you know, pressing you guys that we need this timeline shortened because we're designing our, our town center at this moment and we're losing a huge opportunity because we're not going to come up with policies until, you know, three years from now. And we talked about this a couple of years ago, that the town center was a perfect opportunity to integrate our sustainability initiatives at the same time. So I am just really frustrated with the situation that we're in. And it just doesn't seem like we're taking this seriously. And it really bothersome. All right. So I've said my piece there. Oh, so I did have some questions on the slides. There was evaluating trees on inner ring of Town Green. So what does that mean? What are you evaluating them for?
So the, the original...
Cutting them down or planting more?
The original layout of Town Green did not have any trees on the inner circle. We've been working with Mary at the Parks Department to see if adding some trees is appropriate. You know, it's a balance between having event space and having maybe some base space where people can come out and sit or have a picnic and stuff like that. Obviously, we want to, we don't want to flood the whole green with trees because then it's not an event space anymore, right? So we are looking at it. I say we're evaluating it because it also has a cost implication and we're still trying to evaluate all that. But that, the rationale for it is because we're trying to make the space more inviting and multipurposeful.
Okay.
That's what we're...
I can understand that. On slide five, I had a question about the light fixtures. Kyle, you said that you looked back at past work sessions and the council seemed to coalesce around these gooseneck style. But then you said Kim Lee Horn is suggesting these other ones? Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll help. We all, I think he and I both watched the video. So we, we've been trying to determine what's the, the right fixture, Duke fixture now. I'm just talking to Duke fixtures, as well as finding fixtures that we will own and operate that match and that can work together within the town center. We also were looking at the surrounding lights and trying to come up with something that was obviously different. Yes, the work session that we saw, it seemed like there was a majority consensus on the gooseneck fixture. As we started looking at the furniture and fixtures, like the bike racks and trash receptacles and all that, Kim Lee Horn had suggested that maybe we look at something a little bit more, I don't want to say modern, because it's not, it's not fair to say modern, but something more simple, like the one above the gooseneck fixture, that would match maybe better with the bollard options that Duke has as well, which is, this is one of the bollard options here, a very simple design. So in a way, we're just letting you know, as well as listening for input, because if you're not content with that, we're happy to go in any which way, because there's Duke options.
Yeah, you know, I remember when we discussed this, we had a whole slide just of light fixtures. And we had quite a bit of a discussion about it. And we all solidified on the gooseneck fixture. So, I mean, personally, me, I would like to stick with that. I mean, that's what we talked about.
Fair enough.
But, you know, other council members may have a different opinion on that. But that's where I'm at. We already decided on that, so I don't know why we would want to bring it up again. And then the, I don't know which slide it was, the bathrooms? Are the bathroom? So I see that wellness room and the ladies' or women's restroom. I'm assuming that's a lactation room?
Yes.
Okay. Where, where's the diaper changing table in the men's restroom?
We don't, we're not showing that level of detail, but they'll likely be placed on the wall near the...
So you're not, okay. So will there be, I, I just hope you're not relying on the single-use restrooms as the place where your diaper changing table is going to be? That you're going to have them in the multi-stop?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then lastly, and then I'll shut up. I like Carolina Street and Foxglove Lane. It, you know, we're not like Apex or Cary that has a quaint little cute downtown. We have the Pugh House and we have streets named Foxglove and Carolina Street. I would like to keep those myself. I think these suggestions, whatever it was, Town Hall Way or Town Green, it's kind of just blah, utilitarian. And I, I like keeping Carolina and maybe Foxglove Lane. I like that.
Sounds good. Again, that's, that's not, those two examples were just...
I know.
We weren't suggesting those whatsoever. We're just saying, you know, maybe you want some other option. Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Rapp is next, please.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring up a point about the retail. And this was just a point, but, you know, like for me, I would like to see something similar to like where they've done at Box Yard, where there's more of a kind of like circular kind of environment where you've got the stage and the amphitheater. It's very, it's very, it's very, going and getting food. There's like just different stores and shops and it's very conducive to kind of like, you know, on whores and startups. And we can put it in the office, we can have incubators, I know we touched on that. So I know this is a work in progress, but I'm kind of looking at what can make us unique.
What could make us unique about, um, you know, compared to looking at other downtowns? And I think that's something that could be really, really nice, you know? I mean, even like, you know, a building that, when an office place, like when I go there, what I love about the Boxyard is that you've got the frontier and then you've now got the building eight hundred where they do events. So you've got places where they can do events, but then you've got the outdoor side where they can even do events like at the breweries and things like that. So just, I think thinking about that, whatever we can do to create an energy, a sense of innovation, a sense of, you know, lots of people coming, like what Councilman Robati said, when I saw that first image, that was the first, you know, kind of thought I had was it's just, you know, just go there, get your food. And the other thing is, I don't know whether we thought about a food hall, right? Like, I mean, like, like what they have in Raleigh where you have these food halls where kind of a similar kind of thing. So just, just some food for thought on the, on the mixed use component.
Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Johnson, please.
So I'm gonna try not to repeat a lot of stuff that was said, but I'll try to weigh in on a couple of things where you asked for advice. Um, with the lights, I, I'm kind of agree with Councilmember Bender. I like the light fixture that we, we settled on the last time, so I want to make sure I weigh in on that. The trees in the, in the, in the green space, I had a question about that and you did a great job answering that. I understand there's the balance between offering some, you know, more trees and shade as well. But yeah, the view is, is concerning to make sure that that's, so I'm happy here, you're talking about that and that, that balance is there. I, I guess what I would ask maybe on slide 10, you, you have a picture of an outdoor kind of eating area and then it looks like a, a box, um, well, not, not slide 10, sorry, my mistake. Oh no, it is like, it's the one where the people are out. Sorry, my laptop was on, that's the one, you were right, slide 10. I'm looking at my laptop, not at the screen in front of me. The, 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 where you, where you show the umbrellas and then it looks like is there a planting box there? Is there potential that those planting boxes could hold trees? Are they going to be large enough? Could we put trees there instead? And it's not, nothing to be answered right now. I like the idea of having, um, as many trees as possible to offer nat- natural shade, but I also don't want it to block the view and the events that we're gonna add. So, um, just wanted to, um, weigh in on that. Uh, the education garden, is the, is the size equivalent to what they have today?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We worked closely with them to make sure we could provide the same airspace.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. And then, um, the only other thing I'll weigh in on, uh, cause I think this is the only other thing you asked about weighing in on. I am open to hearing ideas about the changing of the street names. Doesn't mean I'll agree in the end. Um, I do agree, I'd like to know if there's any significance behind the Carolina Street name. Any historical significance would be nice to know about. And then, you know, the, uh, the question was asked, you know, you don't want, we don't want, and I thought about this too. I don't want to inconvenience residents that have to have their address changed. But I went out and looked and besides the town of Morrisville, there are only three other property owners on Carolina and all three of them do not live in this town. They, they're, one is out of state even, so they're kind of absentee landlords. So I'm not, you know, maybe there's a rental, a renter we're inconveniencing, but that would only be three, potentially three people. And I'm not even sure, I didn't verify if they're structured. So, um, so as far as inconveniencing folks, I think it would be minimal. I'm not saying it wouldn't exist, so, um, but Foxglove, are you talking about just changing the name of the, the portion of Foxglove that comes through the town center, not where the residents are today?
Correct, and the same for Carolina, cause Carolina now extends all the way to Morrisville Carpenter Road because of the Thornberry subdivision. So it'd be the same concept. If we did any name change, it would just be within the town center district.
Got it, I forgot about the other side.
So it wouldn't affect all the other residents.
That's right, that's right, okay. Um, okay, I hate when street names change. I don't know why we do that now. I may be a part of doing that. It just makes me crazy when you get to a corner and then you're going straight and it's a different street name. So that might, that might take everything I just said away. So, but I'm still open to seeing what you might come up with if it's something really creative. And I don't like what you offered and I know they were just placeholders. I know they were just placeholders, but.
I think the historical review of that is a good, good suggestion, appreciate it.
And I think that's all you asked about, so if there's anything else, I'll come back to you. But that's all, the only comments I have right now, thank you. A great presentation, thank you for the update. Very, very good work, good work. I know there's a lot more to come, so, thank you.
Mayor Pretem Garamello, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Again, how combination, very good presentation. About the cottages, my thought process was when we were looking at it, it will have rooftop, kind of an ambience where you have the option down and up too, so that you can, if there's a concert or anything going, you can watch it from the top. Is that still the plan or are you guys, you know, not having that?
No, that is still the plan. We are preparing to, um, provide the structure for potential roof garden on all four of the buildings.
Awesome, okay, that's, that's good. And then your, so much has been said, but what are your questions? You know, like I just want to ensure that I answer what you guys are looking for, especially the street ones. I'm open for it, but I don't see like Town Hall and, you know, we have Town Hall, Town Green, but I don't see a street that really signifies Morrisville anywhere. You know, there's, the closest I see is Morrisville Carpenter, that is the only street. But like, um, just exclusive Morrisville that everyone will know where it is, you know, is more of a landmark than, you know, there'll be thousands of Town Halls all across, but not a Morrisville Street or whatever you want to call them, or Morrisville Junction, I don't know. And I'm just throwing names there, but that would have a unique, that people know where it is, which is kind of ties in altogether like for the downtown, just a thought process. And, and I'm assuming there will be thousands of Carolina Street all across. It's by the town, like can have each Carolina like street? Or is it unique that no one else can have it if we have the Carolina Street?
No, there could be another Carolina Street across the country, really.
Not of the country, but in the county itself.
Uh, you're right, and within the county, I'm not sure, Michelle might be able to answer better than me, but I don't think you're allowed to have it twice in the county.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking, so.
Yeah, that's right.
What's that?
Yeah, I think in the county you can't have it twice, yeah.
That's why, so I just didn't want to give that away either. But anyway, it's, it won't be there because you said that Thornberry already has a Carolina Street tied into it. So, uh, but you know, like, I just, I'm open to change, but I don't want to give away the Carolina Street. As a unique indicator, that's all. What else? Again, the communication plan I think is critical because this is going to be a multi, multi-year project, not, um, like a short project. So any communications and road closures will go a long way in helping the community along. My, my last question is the first picture that you have shown.
On the first page?
Yeah, like, uh, if you go, I'm not good in.
This one?
Yes, number three. My understanding was when we were doing, uh, there will be some kind of a monument near the circle, Town Hall Circle, like which basically gives the aha feeling. But, you know, here you're actually going inwards to really get a view of, you know, entering into the park. So did we miss something there?
Yeah. Sorry, I, I'm, I heard you, I was just trying to confer with.
Yeah.
Oh, the, the existing roundabout, oh, nothing's proposed there.
Yeah, nothing, because do you think that's a lost opportunity where when people take the circle, you know, something that is aha moment there, you know, like a monument or something that people can look? But because the number three is good, what you're saying, but it's inwards, you know? People don't see it while they're driving. They are forced to go into the Foxglove or Carolina Street to get that feeling of it. That, that's, you know, uh, I just thought that would be something while you drive, it will attract more people. Uh, something which is attractive and especially we, we are very cognizant of all those cottage, you know, small businesses which are coming, they have to thrive, you know? If we don't attract from outside, the chances of they coming in is less, in my opinion.
Agreed. It's not currently proposed, but it is an opportunity to put something there, absolutely.
Yeah, just as a some landmark, that's all, that's it, thank you.
Thanks.
Just to piggyback on that, initial presentations way back when had like a big sign, like an entry sign, and that was always kind of near the roundabout. So where you've done the new sidewalk on one, that's where everyone's coming from the parking lot anyway. That seems like that's a really natural place as an entrance to have some kind of branding. And I think that's why we're hiring the consultant to make something like that happen, which I think will be important. So going right to branding, I think that having the consultant look into the possibility of different names for the roads would be really important. And I think it would be a great opportunity to involve the residents and other stakeholders in like, what names do you think would be interesting? Like up by perimeter park, they have Think Place and things like that. So we could be more about innovation or one of our other values in a roadway, that could be something interesting. I really appreciate how Mayor Pretem brought up the rooftop idea, cause when you were talking about HVAC and everything up there, I was gonna say, well, you can have HVAC on one of the two buildings, there's two halves. So I'm glad that you guys are still looking at having people up top. And I'm not sure about ADA and stuff, whether it's spiral staircases or elevators or whatever, cause that's expensive. But, um, having people up top, just seeing some of the other visuals, I think that will make it a really interesting place to be. I always thought it would've been nice to have that on the library as well, but that, that didn't happen. So it'd be nice to have that opportunity here for us. And I was taking notes as everyone was talking, so I'm gonna be a little bit all over the place, so you might have to watch the video again to do this. About the trees around the edges, I'd love to see more of a pros and cons about what is good and what is bad about that. The visibility from sitting on the, um, the benches that are around the circle, I mean, if you're blocking the stage, that's not great. But pairing some of these trees together and letting people put hammocks in between them, or there's balancing lines, stuff like that. It's an opportunity to make the park more interesting. Also, there was hammocks pictured, but I didn't see actually where they're gonna be located. Dix Park, you know, the Sunflower Field has a really great little hammock area, as does one of the lake parks around here too, in Raleigh. So I think hammocks and other kind of relaxing things are gonna be really nice. Another, a pro about having the trees on the inside is shade, so people can have picnics there and read and hang out. But, um, I'm not sure if that's the best place for it. If there's enough around the outside, maybe that's enough. So, um, I really like how Councilmember Scott James Johnson brought up, or that you guys are noting the electricity needs for all our events. She brought that up about the Western Wake Farmers Market early on and that was able to be included along the roadway there. So I think that's gonna be really important, so that we're future-proofing, so we can do events and things like that. On slide five, you're talking about, um, the garbage cans and all the bike racks and things. I really love to see us hinting about green and blue, which are our colors throughout, and also as many M's as possible. I've seen lots of bike racks that are kind of shaped like M's or give hints of M's. I know that our front sprayers are shaped as M's also, so this can almost be M's, but I think we could be a little bit more intentional about getting that. Color-changing lights, I've seen places where have brickwork that has lights in it as well, which could make our area very interesting as well, having some walkways that have some lights. Like I mentioned, I'm yes to the street renaming, involving the community would be great. In regards to the cottage retail buildings themselves, when I first saw it, just because of the lack of color and stuff, it's, it looked a little bit like Tatooine from Star Wars, which is not quite what we're going for. But I think we will make them very interesting, so I'm really looking forward to seeing how we do. I agree that sustainability should be really foundational and we don't need to have policies in place to implement innovation. We can be leading edge on these things and we can try new things as we go. And I think it's gonna be worth the investment. I know one of our recent work sessions, we're about trying to reduce our costs. But if we're gonna do this, I think it's important that we do it right and be really foundational. Uh, water reclamation is a really nice thing to be able to do here. Northwest Park, we won an award for that, so anything that we can do here towards water reclamation and using that for this ground. We learned at Church Street Park that, um, doing it right the first time is really important. So we want this to be able to drain well. I know we have a nice slope, which will help, but let's really think about making sure that this is not gonna have puddles. So that's gonna be really important.
The Town Green has an extensive undergr- underdrain system being proposed for the Town Green, so we won't have those issues that we have at Church Street Park.
Okay, um, one other thing about the front by the stage, there's a little crescent. Can you explain what that little item is and what it's for?
Sorry, went the wrong way, wrong way. Stage, oh, here we go. Which, uh, maybe I'm not following.
Well, like, here I see it here and it doesn't have grass in front of it and one of the other renderings, it does. Like go up a little bit, right behind the people that are hunched over, it looks like there's a little curb in the shape of a crescent. There's a different rendering later in the thing that shows it.
Which one? I don't, I don't recall, to be honest with you. Let me go to another one, see if it pops up.
That.
Oh, yeah, that's, that really, um, yeah, that's an extension of the, of the stage portion. It really shouldn't really be green on that spot there.
So that, the stage extends that far?
Ground.
At ground level and there's concrete there or grass?
Yeah, I, that's.
One rendering it's grass and one it's concrete and I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I, I think this is all concrete in here. On, on the, below the arc.
Okay, that sounds good. It looks like it's too small for a skating rink, though.
It's too small for skating rink.
Okay, sounds good.
But you could do ice skating across the entire Town Green, I guess, if you really desired something interesting during the winter.
Probably not good for the grass.
Yeah.
So, um, roof seating grades. Sorry, just a second, catching up. The Duke Bollards, are they gonna be providing downward light or are they just mostly to keep cars out, the Bollards?
It's, uh, downward lighting, it's for pedestrian pathways and stuff.
Okay, that sounds great. Uh, maybe those can be multicolor also, or the option?
So anything owned by Duke won't be color-changing, so we would have to make a choice if we wanna own and operate those Bollards ourselves at an added cost. So we'll, we can look into that.
Okay. When we were discussing the Goose necks, I may be misrecalling, I didn't listen to the video again like y'all did, but I thought that we were really excited about having the Goose necks down on Carolina Street, kind of along the street, cause that would just be a certain look and that we might've been open to something different within the town center to sort of set it apart. So that was my recollection of that. Yeah, so those were my thoughts and I really appreciate, everyone gave this a lot of thought and gave a lot of good input. So, um, I'm sure you can just process all that and come back tomorrow?
Yeah, absolutely. You gave us a lot of homework, I'll try to get it done overnight.
Okay, um, did you, do you feel like you got what you needed?
Yes.
From us, tonight?
Yes, we did, thank you so much.
Anything, Town Manager, we're good? Mayor Pretem, did you have something else?
Thank you so much, very exciting, we're almost there.
For the hard work.
We're almost there.
Almost there, August.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take a break. We're a little behind, maybe we can knock off public address and then take a break?
Do public address.
We're supposed to break at eight. You guys get to go for another fifteen minutes or so?
Do public address, yes, yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item nine, which is public address. Has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, we have, uh, two individuals signed up. Uh, the first is Lou Yuranyi and then Jim Simmons.
Okay, for those who have signed up to speak, please approach the microphone stand and when your name is called, and it just was, begin by stating your name and residential address and direct your comments to the council. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to ensure everyone has a fair opportunity to share their thoughts. A timer will start after you state your name and address and a buzzer will sound when your time is up. We appreciate your cooperation in helping us manage time fairly for all participants. Floor is yours, sir.
All right, good evening, uh, Mayor, Town Council and staff. My name is Lou Yuranyi, I live at Mystic Grove Circle here in Morrisville. I've come here tonight to speak on one of tonight's agenda action items, item 11A, which is a resolution approving an amendment to the Wake County Open Space Grant Agreement for Church Street Park. So the first thing I want to talk about is what is open space? Not everybody knows what open space is, not, not everybody has researched it. You can find the full answer on Wake County's website. They, they have a full page on all the details of Wake County open space and what that means. But in layman's terms, what it means, um, in layman's terms and what, what it means in terms of what was written into the agreement that we signed with the county in order to receive grant money to purchase the land that we're talking about in, in this amendment. The exact words in the, in the agreement was it's land to be used for and maintained exclusively for open space and used only for passive recreational or passive maintenance of water quality. I'll add that it puts strict restrictions on impacting the existing tree canopy and it severely limits any addition of non-permeable surfaces, such as, such as, but not limited to asphalt and concrete. Buildings would also fall under that. It's intended to preserve natural space within our growing community. The amendment to the agreement on the agenda tonight is to reimburse the county $266,928 of our taxpayer money, so that the restrictions can be lifted. Why would Town Council be pushing for that? I can only speculate, but, but I'm gonna give you some of my thoughts. Pertaining to, to the tree canopy, Morrisville is leading the charge for making sure we have the fewest trees from the latest Wake County tree, tree canopy assessment, which you can also find on Wake County's website. You'll see on page thirty of, of, of that assessment that Morrisville, at the time of the study, which I believe was dated sometime in 2020, Morrisville is leading in that category with the fewest trees of any town in, in Wake County. Morrisville is at thirty-eight point, no, I'm sorry, Wake, Morrisville is at 33.7% of our area with tree canopy. The next closest town, um, in Wake County has a tree canopy of 45.0%, which is over 10% more tree coverage than we have, tree canopy than we have. For the impervious surface, again, thinking about concrete, asphalt, buildings.
Mr. Yuranyi, if you could finish that one thought and we would appreciate the rest in email or something, please.
I can do that. That's another counting, that's another category where the town leads the charge at 38%, 38.2% of our surface area here in the town, um, is impervious, which means water won't drain. It's gonna sit there or it's gonna run off into our creeks, but it will not drain through the, through the surface. The closest competitor to that, um, is at 26.3%. And I'll, I'll leave it there, I'll send the rest in an email.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hudson? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, I'm Jim Simmons. I live at, uh, 100 Golden Horseshoe Circle. As you know, I've from time to time have mentioned the quality of the staff and our elected officials that I've found here in this town to be almost without peer. I wanted to tell you however, about something I encountered last Saturday at the Aquatic and Fitness Center. I was there about 2:30 and, uh, I became aware of an loud argument going on in the pool. And I looked up and there was a, a gentleman who was distraught about something. And, uh, I didn't pay a lot of attention, but just minutes later, he had, uh, was joined by a, a gentleman who's on the staff there who had him quieted down, was talking to him closely and resolved whatever the issue was from very loud and boisterous to something that was really hard to imagine. And I don't know who the guy is, he was working Saturday about 2:30, but I wanted to let you know, this, who's ever on that staff at that aquatic center did the community a big service and I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. For those who maybe didn't have a chance to sign up, we give the opportunity to speak on any item for up to three minutes at this time. If you'd like to approach the microphone, uh, write down your name and address on the sheet and then announce it, please, into the microphone, we'd appreciate it. And if there's anyone else that they just want to line up on the wall behind him.
Is it all right if I do this afterwards to?
Whatever works for you, sure.
Hi, my name is Erickson Kessling and I live at 402 Mannington Drive. I appreciate all of the efforts and hard work that the Town Council and staff are doing to make Morrisville a destination. I too share this goal and I share many of the concerns expressed by the council tonight about the town center update. I wanted to share some of my thoughts that I've had and to make some requests moving forward. First, provide a pedestrian pathway to Scoggins Avenue from Foxglove to allow greater pedestrian accessibility and serve the residents along that street, as well as provide a more direct pathway to the Morrisville Christian Church, the Community Garden and the First Baptist Church of Morrisville and preschool. Second, ensure there is a transit stop on Town Hall Drive at the town center and provide local service to the stop, as well as petition Go Triangle and Go Cary to have routes that stop here as well. Third, ensure the use of pavers on Foxglove and Carolina and also keep the names, I like them, to calm traffic and then also close off Foxglove on the weekends to create a pedestrian-friendly space that encourages activity and engagement. Fourth, expand pedestrian-oriented commercial zoning within the town center district. Right now, the town center commercial zoning is across the train tracks and across Morrisville Carpenter Road, limiting true pedestrian accessibility. The new town center is a great start, but we need more development that prioritizes pedestrians. Please consider pedestrian bridges and/or tunnels to enhance accessibility across these barriers. Beyond the town center, we should continue to make our community more walkable and bikeable. I'm seeing a lot of that already, but there is so much more that could be done. Imagine walking down the street to your locally-owned bakery to pick up freshly baked bread. Imagine biking to the local market to pick up your groceries. Imagine taking transit to your favorite entertainment venue alongside people who share that passion. Imagine our children and elders being able to meet up with their friends and enjoy the town without having to rely on their families to drive them. to drive them. Pedestrian-oriented development isn't just better for the environment. It makes life richer and healthier and allows our residents to live well and live connected. Even if you're a car person, you should still want pedestrian development, public transportation, and cycling infrastructure, as it's the only way we'll ever reduce traffic. This should be the default and not a luxury. Let's make Morrisville a place where people of all ages can move freely and independently without having to dodge two tons of steel. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight and I look forward to further updates on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Was anyone else interested?
Mayor, we do have one emailed comment as well.
Okay, please do share.
So this comment was received this morning at 10:35 a.m., which is within your current window of time. So I will read the comment in its entirety. It says, "My name is Bill Dukowitz. I'm a Morrisville resident and I live at 1112 Justice Falk Avenue. I'm a board member of the foundation partnering with the town to build a veterans memorial near Town Hall. I'm a Vietnam veteran and receive a VA disability pension from Agent Orange exposure for my service during the Vietnam War. There are important issues in the memorial project that require review. The town is committed to moving forward with a memorial design approved at the January 2023 council meeting. I'm a board member since 2017 and members of both the VFW and American Legion. As a Vietnam veteran, it is very clear veterans and donors are turned off by the town-approved design. Suggest the town discuss the memorial with veterans before moving forward with the approved bad design. If the town believes the current design is a good design, someone should be prepared to explain to veterans why the approved design is the best option to build a memorial in Morrisville."
Thank you very much. So we are about a half hour behind, so we're scheduled to break at eight. So why don't we go ahead and take a break and then we'll come back with item 10, public hearings. Does that sound okay? Okay, please reconvene at, taking 15 minutes. So come back at seven, eight, 8:10. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session now. We have one public hearing item scheduled this evening. We invite May Golden, Planner One, forward to brief Town Council on the proposed master sign plan for the Pathway Triangle campus. Following this evening's public hearing, Town Council is scheduled to take action on this item on the April 8 meeting. Ms. Golden?
Good evening, Council. Mayor Colley. So today I have the master sign plan for the Pathway Triangle campus for you, identified by 2025-30. Here is an aerial of Pathway's campus. It consists of approximately 73.65 acres and is identified by the Wake County pins here. And the applicant for your reference is King Street Properties. As we can see here, this outlines the layout and overall proposed quantities and type for each proposed sign, a table for the overall proposed quantities, including the respective locations. The applicant is proposing two of the Type A ground signs. These are comparable to our Type A monument signs in section 516 of the UDO. The applicant is requesting 44 square feet of sign face. The town typically permits 32 square feet for the sign type, and the calculations are coming from the proposed elevations here. As a general reminder, the master sign plan allows the applicant to propose their own dimensional standards. When a sign permit is applied for, the permit would be reviewed against the master sign plan and will not affect the UDO. And just again, as a disclaimer, that this will not affect the UDO in any manner and will not set any new precedent. So another additional proposed sign that King Street Properties is proposing is Type C ground signs, these small directional freestanding signs. The UDO table 516.4 requires a maximum sign face of six. The UDO Table 516.4 requires a maximum sign face of six and maximum quantities of four sign type. The applicant is requesting six and three with larger sign face areas of approximately six and nine feet, nine square feet respectively. The applicant is also proposing four of the wall-mounted type. The UDO Table 5.16.4 requires a maximum sign face area of two square feet per one foot of the building wall that the sign is placed on, and the applicant is requesting four of those potential tenant identity signs with a maximum of 75 sign face area. The applicant also provided these notes with the master sign plan application. The dimension of each sign type will not exceed what is shown in this document. The location changes shall not increase in quantity as set forth by these guidelines. Any changes to these approved sign locations will be done through a minor modification process. No ground signs placed at any intersections will disrupt those site distance triangles, and two signs shall be internally lit by low voltage landscaping lighting. Lighting fixture cut sheets will be submitted to the owner for approval. And just for reference, those are the monument signs at the front. So staff recommends an approval of the master sign plan application for these following reasons. The application complies with the stated purpose of regulations in UDO Section 516.1A. The request does not include any prohibited signs as identified in UDO Sections 516.2D, 516.2E, and 516.2F. The application does not include any temporary signage. The application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the application does not conflict with any other provisions in the UDO or the Morrisville Code of Ordinances. The Planning and Zoning Board meeting considered the request for the master sign plan and held a public comment session at their March 13th, 2025 meeting, and the PZB Board recommended approval of Ordinance 2025-30 with a vote of 5-0. All right, the council is asked to open a public hearing this evening, and action on this item is slated for the following council meeting on April 8th. And that's all I have for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, Council may have, as well as the applicant is here for any additional questions.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Thank you. Just really quickly, could you go back to Slide 2, please? Sorry, Slide... I think it's the next one. Try Slide 4, sorry. Okay, there we go, this one. Okay. So could you explain to me why the applicant... I don't really see the difference between these two signs, except that one obviously is higher. Is there a dip in the ground or something? Is there some type of variation in the site that's leading the applicant to ask for this sign to be raised, what looks like a pretty minimal amount?
So typically, footings are not included in those sign face area calculations. It's just the messaging area. And additionally, the applicant is proposing a maximum, so it may be smaller. They just want some of that wiggle room.
Okay, it looks to me like the messaging areas of these two signs are exactly the same. Am I wrong? Are they actually bigger?
I believe that they're exactly the same. I think this one is just a little bit more minute in those calculations.
Okay. Was there any public comment at the PCB meeting, just out of curiosity? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? Seeing none, I'll declare that the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, Mayor, no one signed up.
Is there anyone here in the room who would wish to speak on this item? Okay, so this was duly noticed, and I think people who would want us to be here would be here. So if it's the will of the council, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Rob to close the public hearing. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. Public hearing is now closed. Does council have any other comments or questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your hard work, and thank you to the applicant for investing in Morrisville.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate them being here. Now we're going to take a break. Kidding. Now we're at Action 11, action items. We have one action item on this evening's agenda. We invite Mary Fossett, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Director, forward to brief Town Council on the resolution approving an amendment to the Wake County Open Space Grant Agreement for Church Street Park and Church Street Park Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. Town Council has requested to brief and take action on this item this evening. Director Fossett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present before you the amendment to the Wake County Open Space Grant Agreement. I want to take y'all back in time, but I feel like we've gotten a little bit tired. So I'll just try to be brief and not take you too far back in time. But the outcome tonight is to approve an amendment to the Wake County Open Space Grant for Church Street Park. As we step back and look back to where we've been, in 2007, the town of Morrisville in Wake County entered into an MOU entitled "Grant Agreement," which was to be used towards a portion of the purchase price of a tract approximately 18.17 acres, known as the Research Triangle Foundation, used only for passive recreation. In October 2015, the First Amendment to the MOU was executed to provide the town to pay monies to Wake County to release the passive recreation restrictions and allow for active recreation under the grant agreement in a seven-acre area of territory in exchange for the payment. In August of 2024, at the Direction Town Council, Town Manager Brandon Zunema requested that the county amend the MOU to release the remaining 11.12 acres in exchange for a payment of $266,928. In September of 2024, the Wake County Open Space and Parks Advisory Committee reviewed this request and unanimously voted to recommend that the Wake County Board of Commissioners approve the town of Morrisville's request to lift the passive recreation restriction on the remaining 11.12 acres at Church Street Park. In October of 2024, the Wake County Board of Commissioners approved the real estate transaction, authorizing the county to sell its remaining interest in the town-owned parcel located at Church Street Park in Morrisville in accordance with the statute 160A-274, being approximately 11.12 acres, accepting the town's offer in the amount of $266,928 to remove the restrictions. Tonight, this request is before you for the authorization for the town manager to sign the amended contract with Wake County regarding the release and incorporation of the 11.12-acre parcel into active recreation. The total payment for this transaction shall be $266,928 appropriated from the parks reserves. I'll now open the floor for any questions.
I do not see anyone with questions or comments at this time. I take that back. Councilmember Johnson, please.
So just a comment, Mary. This information is included in the briefing but not the slides. Can we make sure that the slides are incorporated? Because they're not out there for the public. So can we make sure that's incorporated in the agenda packet? It's the same information, it's just in slide format, but I think it's important that it kind of be there as well.
Understood.
So if there's no questions on this item, we have language for the motion in front of us in bold. If anyone would like to make that motion, I would entertain it. And we could do them both at once. I'll recognize Councilmember Rabadi, and then you can segment it if you want. Yeah, in one statement, it's fine.
...and space grant agreement for Church Street Park and Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment 2025-93-0, amending the Church Street Capitol Park Project Ordinance Amendment.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rabadi, a second from Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0, 7-0, sorry. Thank you very much. Director Fossett, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
And thank you to Town Manager Zudma and the team for bringing that opportunity forward. We have one new item on this evening's agenda. I'll invite Town Manager Brandon Zudma forward to brief Town Council on the resolution amending the Town Council Rules of Procedure. Town Council participated in a work session discussion on this item at the March 11th meeting and is scheduled to vote on this item at the April 8th meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. As the mayor indicated, Aaron and I made this presentation to you in a work session at the last meeting. Again, this is recommendations to update the Town Council Rules of Procedure. This stemmed from, I think, a couple things, one of which there was some question and discussion around proclamations. There was also some discussion about some other rules that are within this Rules of Procedure. So based on that, Aaron and I had gone in, and we found that we really hadn't reviewed this deep in for quite some time. So we went front to back and made sure that what was in the rules reflects the current policy, and where it doesn't, we've brought that to your attention to share with you and seek your guidance on how you'd like to see that happen. We've also done some basic updates, again, changing any references to citizens or to residents over to a community member. We've just done some grammar and mechanical cleanup in regards to consistencies throughout the document. So we went through this with you last time, and you gave us consensus on a number of items. So we're not going to address those tonight because we feel we have your blessing on those changes. What we are going to go through is some things that had some discussion last time and really needed to come back to you with some updates. And then again, what we will do is ask you to approve this on consent on April 8th, assuming we reach consensus on the remaining items tonight. So really, the focus for tonight, again, changing resident to community member. We discussed the roundtable majority. We really dug in with public input, currently known as public address. Also talked about remote participation, proclamations, and then closed sessions in minutes. So I'm just going to go through these updates, again, sort of to Councilmember Rabadi's point last time, not going to have in-depth discussion about every bullet, but happy to stop where there's a question to be had, or if we have a question for you to give us feedback. So again, in the regular meetings, Rule 1, just clarify that you have the discretion to move meetings to other locations. This prior was just if this room was not available, but you suggested you might want to go to where the people are in the community. So this gives you that authority to do that in your rules. And then in the Rule 4 for the agenda, we updated the requirement to move a roundtable item forward. It was in the rules as a supermajority, requiring five votes. We really had not been practicing that, and you gave us direction to make that a majority, a simple majority of four votes moving forward.
A quick question on that one. If we have five people present, would that mean three votes, or is it hard?
No, you would need four of the totality of council.
Okay, so not of the present quorum of...
Correct.
Okay.
So moving on to Rule 5, public input to Town Council. Again, this was formerly public address. For clarity on several fronts, we're suggesting public input as the umbrella over all community member input that you might receive. We are highlighting that there are now several opportunities under public input. The first one, as you saw tonight, would be rebranded as Morrisville Speaks Public Comment. That would be in-person during a meeting. There would also be public hearing input. We had a discussion with you last time. There are some public hearings that are statutorily required, and then there are others, rare cases, but you have on occasion elected to hold a public hearing where it's not statutorily required. But really, for the interest of the community, that there's not a difference that they need to be particularly concerned with. So for simplicity, just referring to that as public hearing input. And then you have online public input, where the community can submit public comment or public hearing input remotely. And this just goes a little bit into that. Again, we had previously talked about public input session and voluntary public hearing. You gave us some feedback that that was probably more confusing than it needed to be. So we've just rolled that back to public input session or, excuse me, a public hearing input and public comment being the only two options we'll use going forward. Also, again, just changed residents to community members. And then we had some discussion about when online public input should open. As it stands today, it opens the day of the meeting. You had expressed some, I think, concern with that in the interest of transparency. Our initial draft had rolled that back to immediately following the prior meeting. Based on your feedback last time, we've adjusted this to the Friday, 11 days prior to the next council meeting. This aligns with when we are currently sending out the draft agenda. So we started that earlier this calendar year. It does not include the agenda packet items, but it does at least let the community see, here's what's going to be discussed. And so we felt aligning the online public input with the sending of that draft agenda made sense to us. Again, happy to discuss that with you if you have questions or other ideas about that. Again, for online public input, we added some clarifying language that if a community member submits after 3 o'clock the day of a meeting but still wants their comment to be read in a meeting, it would need to be resubmitted at the next meeting. That's always been a practice, but we haven't really ever defined that in the rules. So again, that just clarifies for the community what their options are there, and we'll include that information on the website when we do an update there as well. Again, online public input, we added clarifying language that community members will be provided guidance online, and of course, from the clerk if contacted, to discern between public input for a council meeting versus public input that they just would like delivered to you that's not intended to be in a meeting or related to a meeting topic. So we'll have that clarification and give them the alternative email on how to communicate with you as a group that's not related to a meeting. So one of the things we talked about that we need to bring back to you and seek a little bit of guidance on, because I don't know that we had consensus, is reading versus summarizing online public input. So you had quite a discussion about that in terms of the ways that that might be handled. So from Aaron and I talking, we feel you have three options on how you can address the acknowledgement of online public input. And as you saw today, the practice right now is if it comes within the window, it gets read, and then if it doesn't, it gets summarized. And there was some question that only a summary being read in versus the entire email being acknowledged was where some of these questions, I believe, came from. And then we also had some discussion about the fact that if you're in the meeting, you know, it gets read into the minutes, but if you just submit online, it doesn't necessarily. So here's the options that we would suggest that you could consider. Option 1, just continue to summarize online public input and maintain the emails on our server to honor any future public records requests. This is essentially what we do now. This option results in full online public input not being available to the community unless they request it, which is different from in-person public input where it's heard and it becomes part of the record. So option 1 is sort of continue doing what we're doing, and folks could get those emails if they made a public records request. So the second option would be to continue to summarize online public input and attach the full email to the meeting minutes. That would not, you know, have it entered into the minutes document, but it would be attached as a supplement so that anyone asking for those minutes or reading those minutes would see the full content of the online public comment or public input, excuse me. Again, this does result in the full online public input being included in the minutes, unlike the in-person public input that is summarized but available via the video recording of the meeting. So again, we summarize public comment in the minutes. This would result in the full online public input being available. Option 3 would be to read each online public input submission into the record for up to three minutes. This option results in the full online public input being included in the video in alignment with the way in-person input is recorded. And then if we do that, there's just another small section we need to change, but we'll take care of that. So I'm open to any questions or any feedback on how you'd like to see online public input handled after it's presented in a meeting or how it's presented in a meeting as well.
I don't see any comments. Councilmember Johnson, and then I'll just add my thoughts.
So I'm okay with keeping it the way we're doing it now. That seems to be working well. I've not heard any concern from the public that their comments are not being heard by council or...
We have not heard that either.
Yeah, so I'm fine with leaving it the way we're doing it now.
I would just say it's not a hill to die on, but I would be okay with that, or at least attaching it to, as an attachment to the minutes, just so it's captured. I'd be in favor of that. So essentially, number two. Okay. And if we don't... Okay, Councilmember Rabadi? Okay, Councilmember Robati?
If we went with that second option, excuse me, if people that commented at the meeting also chose to submit their comments via email, would we then also be attaching that email to the minutes? So that would be an option available to people? Or if a person spoke in the meeting, that we would, their comments would just be available on video even if they submitted their comments in writing?
So that's another decision we'll ask you to help us make tonight. And it certainly could be. I think that's at your discretion as to whether you would allow someone to submit their email comments and then repeat the same comments in the public meeting. Previously, we have not, we have tried to avoid that. If someone wants to submit email comments and they'd like to talk about something different, you have allowed that, but typically have not allowed someone to email in their comments and then repeat their comments again in person. That's just where we are today. But we could do that as well.
Just because, just one more thought on that is that if people go over the three minutes, we do tell them that they're welcome to submit the rest of their comments in writing.
Yes.
So, I mean, so it's not like there's no precedent.
That would be fair also.
I think, I mean, I do think that's worth considering. I think we should be erring on the side of, I mean, I know that not that many people are going back and reading the meeting minutes, but I do think we should be erring on the side of not summarizing people's comments if we don't have to.
Are you done with your thoughts at this time, Councilmember Robati? We'll come back if you want. Okay. Councilmember Skragas Johnson?
Thank you. I think this really goes to a matter of public record. Like, all of our videos are a matter of public record. All of our meeting minutes are a matter of public record. I think meeting minutes are a more formal documentation of the motions that we take, the items that we cover, the presentations and so forth. But in those meeting minutes, we do not have verbatim information.
Correct.
We have, we used to many years ago try to do as much verbatim, but I don't think we've done that for over 10 years. Attaching an email is attaching a verbatim statement and it's also inequitable for people that do manage to speak on video, but then their verbatim comments are not captured on the minutes today. So you're giving unequal treatment to people that send email versus people that come here. And I'd rather be fair to all. Meeting minutes may not be the best use of attaching that information. Maybe there's another way that we can capture email comments, but putting, you know, the verbatim information on meeting minutes for one group of individuals that submit public information, not the other, I think is unfair. So we need to really consider how to make those comments accessible to people that are interested in learning more about the feedback without, you know, unfairly leaning towards one group or the other.
So I think, if I may, that could lean towards Option 3, where you might ask for online public input to be read into the record and that would result in the whole comment being read on video. And then Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would also be summarized in the minutes just as if someone had come to the microphone.
If the treatment is consistent, you know, for both in-person and email and summarized, just as our comments and our thoughts and motions are summarized, I think that's consistent treatment.
I think that's the closest you get, but I'll let Erin, she grabbed a mic there. I think she's going to help me.
Yes, so I think you're both sort of saying the same thing, especially with the proposed extended timeline for allowing email public input. It really gives a much broader opportunity for individuals to submit email comments and, again, very similar to the email comment you had tonight, that would be read into the record. So you would hear the verbatim statement. It would be summarized in the minutes. So you really have sort of the broadest opportunity to hear it in totality and have a summary of that comment as well.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, creating imbalance. Thank you.
You've heard from a few of us. Would anyone else like to weigh in? Councilmember Fender, please.
So based on that conversation between yourself and Councilmember Skragas Johnson, I do believe that going with Option 3 is the best choice.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to weigh in? Okay, Councilmember Rau, please.
Does staff have what they need?
He hasn't heard him.
So, just Councilmember Johnson?
Councilmember Johnson, would you like to circle back?
So I would, I will amend my, I'm going with Option 1, I'll go with Option 3 as well. I think that does, because that was my concern the last time we had this conversation about fairness. And so let me ask this question then. We have a policy that says our public comments will be held to 30 minutes.
Yes.
So we will still adhere to that even if we're reading multiple emails and we have multiple people present.
That would be our recommendation. It's always council's discretion to look at how you want to view that, but if you were to hold it, we could certainly bring those back to the next meeting and have them read into the record at the next meeting after whoever submitted for that meeting.
Okay, and you're right, we always have the ability to extend that if we want. And then we would always give first choice to people present in the room.
Yes, we would acknowledge those present first and then the clerk would read any email comment, online public input comments.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Just that I'm fine to go with the group Option 3. I think Councilmember Skragas Johnson made some good points there.
Okay. Anybody not good with 3? Awesome, moving on. Okay, public input signup, we just made a clarification that the speaker should indicate whether, it used to say if they're a resident, we're suggesting they say if they're a resident or business owner. Doesn't mean they can't speak if they're not, but I think that gives you information about who they are and why they're speaking. Public input signup, again, updated the timeframe for public input signup to close at the agenda item prior to public input on the meeting agenda. Now again, the way we're moving that, there's not too many items before it, as we're going to show you in just a second, but that addresses the concern that if we pull it, anybody arriving late might not be able to get on it. So we are going to arrange for a staff member that'll help out the clerk by getting that for them when we get to the item before the public comment and get that up there. And then again, we've also added the language in there that we've talked about, that the mayor or presiding officer can always allow others, as is typically our practice, that even if you didn't get signed up, we're open and transparent about that. And then just a note, we are researching a return to electronic signup, we're just not ready to do anything with that yet. And then time allotment, updated to reflect that public comment now comes after the consent agenda and proclamations with presentations being shifted after public comment. So we're going to break those out so that you're going to get your proclamations after the consent agenda, then go to public comment, then we'll go to presentations. Protocol, clarified the following regarding a community member who submits online public and speaks in person. I think we will scratch this based on what we just discussed about how we're going to handle online and/or in-person. If time does not allow the speaker to have to resubmit their online public input for another meeting, mentioned that earlier, if we just don't get to them, but they want it read, it'll come back the next meeting. And again, we'll scratch the cannot submit online public input and also speak in person. It sounds like you are not necessarily opposed to that. And then again, just replace residents and other stakeholders with community members. Any questions about Rule 5, public input, Morrisville Speaks, public comment and public hearing input as well as online? I think we've gotten through what you asked us to look at. All right, Rule 6, order of business, created a, again, as we just talked about, a separate section on the agenda for proclamations. So the typical order will now look like consent agenda, proclamations, Morrisville Speaks, public comment, and then presentations. And then break time, we changed this back at your request to that should be anticipated approximately 90 minutes into the meeting. We'd gone away from that and heard that you didn't want to do that, so we put that back. Remote participation, we added a clarification that text messaging is an acceptable form of notice for remote participation. It previously required written notice. We, at your direction, removed the requirement for council to provide a reason for their absence and we, for the purpose of remote participation, added language clarifying the purpose of why we have remote participation. We had talked about that, that, you know, it's intended to be an accommodation and an exception, not a use it when you need it because you're not here sort of approach. So we just added some language to that, again, at your request. So work sessions, one thing that's not in this language, and I don't know that we talked about it last time, maybe an oversight on my part, but we limit the number of remote participations for council meetings, but we don't have any language that addresses any limit on remote participation in work sessions. So we're happy to leave that exactly as it is, but since you have it in one and didn't in the other, just wanted to make sure we asked if you wanted to address that or if you're primarily interested in limiting actual council meeting participation remotely.
Not item, so I think we're fine the way it is.
We will leave it alone. Thank you, just want to make sure. And then the next section, we removed the language indicating that remote participation may not be available if notified the day of the meeting. We heard you, we will always do our best to accommodate getting remote participants into the meeting as long as we can. Location, we removed at your request the requirement for council members to give their location when participating remotely and we added clarifying language that a remote council member does not count toward quorum and cannot vote. That's been the practice, but if we're going to make this relate to what our policy and procedure is, we added that specific language for clarification. Any questions on remote participation? Okay. Proclamations, requests for ceremonial documents. So again, just replace residents with members of the community. There was a section on recognition that was redundant, so we're trying to keep this as straightforward as we can. And in issuance, clarified that this section now addresses proclamations other than those intended for town staff because we're pulling them out of what was the overall, this is how proclamations work, but at your direction, we're going to do those separately outside of a council meeting and go to staff where they're at, rather asking them to come here after hours, if you recall that. So this just clarifies that the first section doesn't address town staff. And then we added the section, the proclamations recognizing staff will be done outside a meeting and clarified that a proclamation recipient has up to three minutes to acknowledge the proclamation. Again, you always have the ability to waive that if you were to choose, but we heard that from several people that if they're going to come up and receive, that we may want to put some limit on that, so.
I have one little possible tweak to the first one. Can we replace will with may? Because I think there may be times when we do want to recognize staff here at a meeting for whatever reason, if they do something exemplary and we really want the residents to know about it.
Yeah, we can clarify that perhaps if it will be, will normally be done.
Okay.
Again, I don't, I just hesitate to say may because it leaves it a little more grayer than I think you want to be. I think you want it to be an exception to the rule rather than pick. So we'll make that...
I agree with your interpretation of that.
Will normally be done outside of a town council meeting.
Thank you.
Read versus summarize, what I took from that was that council did not prefer, excuse me, seemed to prefer not summarizing a proclamation. So this section was updated, indicate that a proclamation for a public entity with no one in the audience will be read but not presented. We also reduced the number of proclamations allowed per meeting from three to two at your request. And then we also clarified that pre-approved proclamations will be read before external requests. So again, the clerk will be working with you to give you a schedule of what we think are the normal or routine proclamations that are done annually and we'll ask you to sort of bless that with us. And then that would be the first priority. Anything else that would come in would be read if they, if they don't already have two or perhaps if you all were to choose to make an exception, you could do that. But again, this would be the standing practice.
Okay. Councilmember Robati followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
So the, if you could just scroll down a little bit to, okay, 25A4, A4. The, where did we get to? Oh, okay, the proclamation for a public entity with no one in the audience. I think that possibly we've gone a little bit overboard with the proclamations in looking for someone to accept the proclamation. And I'm wondering if there's a proclamation about a certain person or a certain, a certain organization, absolutely, I think we should have people hear from that organization. But if the, if the content of the proclamation is more general, I'm wondering, do we every single time need to find someone from an appropriate organization that can accept that proclamation? Maybe we don't. Maybe we can just read a proclamation about Women's History Month and nobody has to accept it. We don't need to find somebody. That's just a thought, but I feel like we kind of spend a lot of time where proclamations are not specific and yet we're presenting them to someone that is, that's related, but the proclamation isn't specifically about them.
Do you want us to try to discuss that as a group or you're just sort of putting that out there?
I mean, I guess I'm putting it out there. If nobody agrees, then it dies.
Councilmember Johnson followed by Councilmember Fender?
So I have, I wanted to talk about this paragraph too. I think I'm confused because if there's no one in the audience, it won't be read or not presented. If there's nobody, you won't present it because nobody's there.
Right.
So, okay, but we would still read it. So I agree, if it's something, if it's related to something general, I think that's okay to read it. But, and then obviously nobody's here, so we don't present it. But if it's specific to an organization, then I don't think we'd read it at all. Because what we're talking about here is the number of proclamations read in a meeting. That does not mean there are other proclamations that are being written by the town and handed out at events.
Yes.
So, so I wouldn't even read one anyways.
Okay.
I would hand it or go to the, whoever, go to the organization, the event or whatever, and read it there. I wouldn't read it here.
Sometimes they request to have it read here, I guess, as part of our process.
I think if it's a more general kind of, that's fine, but if it's kind of specific, I'm not sure. I need examples.
So, and on that point, I think what we can do is let us get together this sample list of proclamations that we have and then we'll ask you some questions when you look at that, such as, is this something you think should be read in a meeting or just presented sort of topically? And then we can sort through that. And then I think we can evaluate the ones that come in as the, not to downplay them, but the more random, we haven't seen this before, it's a newer, different proclamation. I think the clerk's office, with my support, can certainly evaluate those for you. So we will revise A4, A4.
You can. Councilmember Fender, please.
I was going to agree with what Councilmember Robati said, that we don't always have to have an individual or organization to present something to. I mean, sometimes it's okay just to read it.
Gotcha, thank you. All right?
We're good?
All right. So we also clarified that if a proclamation is sent in and it's timely, which means, you know, we can't really push it to a future meeting because it would be after the event that's being proclaimed. that's being proclaimed, it would be listed in the proclamations portion of the agenda but not read. So, it would show that you issued the proclamation, but it's not being read, because it's more than, it's not on the top two. Again, to try to keep that minimized from a priority standpoint. Clarified that all issued proclamations will be posted on the website, we'll work with rocks to get a spot, then anybody can go and find that list and look at them. That may hold until the new website, to be honest, because the more changes we make right now, she yells at me more, and I don't like that. We are making her life just a little more difficult, so we're close on that. So, we will change that with the new website. And again, just another change of residents or businesses to community members. So, again, just wanted, we talked about a few things here. So, the summary was that there'll be up to two proclamations read per meeting. The proclamation will be presented if there is a non-staff recipient in the audience, based on the, what the topic is from our conversation tonight. The recipient, again, will be limited to three minutes to acknowledge the receipt, and proclamations recognizing staff will be normally presented outside of council meetings. And then, for proclamations beyond the two that get read, they'll be rescheduled to a future meeting, or will just be listed on the agenda showing that you did that, but it won't be read. And then, staff will use the existing policy to prioritize if we have more than two for any given evening. Any questions on proclamations? Thank you for the feedback. So, closed session minutes, this was the other one. You will recall that I think in 2017, a separate policy about closed session minutes was adopted. It's included as an appendix to the rules of procedure, but it's inconsistent with the rules of procedure. So, what we did was, and I said 2017, I apologize, 2018. What we have done is looked through that, and then, using your feedback from the last meeting, we have combined the content from that policy into the rule. My recommendation is you take that approach and don't have a separate standalone policy that could be, you know, different from what the rule says, and are you updating both? And is somebody looking at one and not the other? So, our recommendation is you consider it back into the rules. So, what we have said is closed sessions, clarified the staff that normally participate in closed session discussions. We also clarified that closed sessions are not open to the public, did some reorganizing of the information within here. And then, we removed any reference to all council members reviewing minutes, based on your feedback last time. That'll continue to be done by the mayor and the mayor pro tem, until they come to be unsealed, and then you would be involved in a vote to unseal them. Added a reference to the policy or to the rule, because it was in the policy marking closed session minutes as confidential, not for public record. And also clarified that fully reviewed closed session minutes are forwarded to the town clerk for secure storage. And then, at the end of the year, typically, the town attorney, myself, and the town clerk review those to determine if they still remain sealed or not. And then, in the unsealing, sealing and unsealing section, clarified that closed session minutes are sealed and confidential per North Carolina general statute, and clarified the process for unsealing closed session minutes. Happy to answer any questions about the recommendation to put that information strictly in the rule.
I think silence is assent.
Awesome. So, again, next steps, we will make any final adjustments to the draft update. We've got a few things to do after our conversation tonight. We'll then come back with what will be a full red line document. I apologize for what that's going to look like, it's going to have a lot of red in it, but we want you and the community to be able to see for transparency what those are. And then, of course, we'll give you a clean version to look at as well, and we're going to put that on consent at the April 8th meeting unless you direct otherwise.
I think we've done enough work on that, that we're pretty close, so consent sounds reasonable. And if that's not the case, we'll just pull it at the time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number 13, as future meetings, events, and resident involvement opportunities, for a full listing, please see our town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. We're now moving on to council comments. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson will share first, then will be followed by Mayor Pro Tem-Garamella.
No comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem-Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please. Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself, please.
No comments.
I'm going to break the streak, and it'll be Councilmember Robati after me. I just want to say that many in our region, including myself, mourn the loss of Seppi Sadi. She was an inspirational business leader who fought a courageous battle with cancer. Her legacy of innovation and dedication has left a lasting impact, making the Raleigh region stronger and better through her efforts and unwavering support for others. On a different note, I'm very much looking forward to Green Day at Church Street Park this Saturday from 8:00 AM until noon. Please bring your recycling, your fats, oils, and greases, your electronics, anything with a plug, and your documents to be shredded, and your batteries, which are not supposed to go in the trash. So, thank you all very much. Now, it's Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
I just want to say that I was so happy to participate in Little League Opening Day in Morrisville, and thrilled that we have our first softball team, Go Monarchs, and good luck to everyone this season. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Rao.
Did I want, everything said, and with Little League and great events, Seppi Sadi was a wonderful woman, pray for her family. I want to congratulate Kevin Howell for being named the new chancellor of NC State. I've known him for many years, I think it's going to be great. And I attended the UNC Clean Tech Summit, it was really great. Triangle Tech Night, and all things OpenAI. Really, really great stuff going on in the tech industry. I wanted to just wish everyone a happy Ramadan as well, as it closes out this week. And I want to end on a positive note. I'm going to take the point of personal privilege to say that we now have a Morrisville resident who is going to go work for the New York Times. Our daughter Sonia has been selected as a fellow, and she'll be moving to Manhattan to be on the breaking news section and also covering disabilities. But I think all of us should be proud, because we've seen her here grow up, and she graduated from Morrisville Elementary, Davis Drive, Green Hope, UNC. So, someone in Morrisville is going to be on the New York Times, so I think it's a big day for all of us. And I just wanted to share that great news with my colleagues and the staff.
That is really great news. Congratulations on that.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yep. Also, a point of privilege on behalf of the council and all our residents and other stakeholders, thank you to staff for doing such a great job with the Little League Opening Day and the Holy Celebration, which I think had more people than ever, and was really well done, and takes a lot to organize an event of that magnitude. So, y'all did a really great job, so we all thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And any comments from you, sir?
Yes, sir, very quickly. One, you are aware that Duke Energy has been doing some drilling. We had some discussion with you about how that was going to go. So, the first episode of drilling was over here on Morrisville Carpenter Road, went very nicely, they got under the road, no problems, got right out of there. The second effort is over on McCrimmon Parkway between Town Hall Drive and 54, and they're now trying to go under 54, not so much. They've hit rock upon rock upon rock, which is no surprise to anyone that's ever dug a hole in Morrisville. So, just wanted to let you know that they are doing the best they can. We have extended their permit approval several times at their request. Fortunately, we have not had any real concerns from neighbors in that area, so they are doing their best to finish that, but it is just, they are hitting a lot of rocks. So, if you were wondering, or if the community is wondering, how long is that going to take? We're not sure, but they've been doing what they're supposed to do. There's no been, they haven't been there working delays, it's just the rocks. So, just wanted to make you aware of that and let the community be aware of that. The second thing is, I'm sorry, yes, sir?
Mayor Pro Tem-Garamella.
I think, you know, I agree, we know, but the people don't know if people can be, like, you know, our Facebook and other areas can be, outlets can be used. And also, the other thing I have seen, because I get stuck there all the time, and can we shut down the signaling and have someone, you know, especially during the peak time, run the traffic there, because it's creating all the way till, you know, Town Hall Drive.
It does, I would tell you that trying to put a person there will likely make it worse instead of better. People typically pay attention to a traffic light, they may or may not pay attention to a person in the intersection, and I would recommend that that's probably, it's logical to think that would make it better, but I don't believe it will, from my experience.
Or, can anything be done temporarily to increase more throughput to that signal? One of the two, because I get what you're saying, but from a point of residence, that's not helping.
No, I appreciate that, and we can talk to DOT as well, I guess that's.
Is that a town of care or DOT, like?
DOT.
So, we can ask DOT about that and see what their thoughts are.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I just want to echo what Mayor Pro Tem just said about notifying the public, too. It is, I realize there's not a whole lot of residents in that area, and they may not be complaining, but the rest of us are. I think we've all gotten stuck. So, if we could just share, so the public is aware that we're aware.
Yep.
And what's going on, and that they're doing their best, and what you just said, that they hit rock.
Yeah, wanted to mention that for the video, but also, we'll share that through comms, and we'll be there including that in next week in Morrisville and through social media as well.
Councilmember Rao with a comment?
Yeah, just a comment, I mean, the mention of Duke Energy just triggered a thought. I've been hearing, you know, other mayors and other elected officials talking about, you know, we've been talking, I've been talking about AI a lot, I know Mayor Pro Tem's in the industry, but there's been people approached about data centers in their town, and I was just curious, is that something we could look at eventually of, I know in the old days, there was Peak 10 on McCrimmon, I don't know if we have any data centers in Morrisville, but it is a concern about, with as much AI being used, the kind of energy consumption it would take, and that, you know, made me think about everything we went through, you know.
Yes, staff will be coming to April 8th, April 8th, with proposed UDO amendments related to the GO district, and that will be a topic that will be included.
Do we, do we know how many, do we have any, do we know how many data centers we have in Morrisville right now?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if we do, to be honest.
There used to be one called Peak 10, and then they got bought, and that was on McCrimmon, but I'm not sure.
Second item, not great news, but probably not surprising. You recall that we made a request through Congresswoman Ross's office through the community funding model last year for $1 million to support Town Center. Talked to her staff today, and because the continuing resolution that was passed funds the federal government through September 30th, that continuing resolution did not include any of that community funding, so we will not be receiving that $1 million ask that we placed. However, it is possible that we can request it again for the FY '26 cycle. That, of course, will depend on what the requirements and categories are for that, but spoke to her staff today, and we have a plan on how we'll try to approach that when that opens back up to reapply.
Is, did they, sorry.
You go ahead.
Did they reject all under her, or some got approved, or anything?
No, none, none of the community funding requests got funded.
And Congresswoman Fushi seems very amenable to helping us as well, so.
Yeah, so interestingly, I also learned today that with the redistricting, the Town Center was in Congresswoman Ross's district, and it is now in Congresswoman Fushi's district. However, in my conversation with Congresswoman Ross's staff, they are willing to share what they've talked with us about with Congresswoman Fushi's office, to encourage them to support it. And if the guidelines would allow, they would consider having a conversation about a jointly sponsored request. Again, that's all very early on, there's no commitments there, there's just, this could happen, so that's, but that's where we are. We're trying to stay on top of that and get that as best we can, given the circumstances. All right, my last one. I am officially the second happiest person in the room to share this information with you. The first would be across the way there, we have a town clerk. So, Kayla Bertling, B-E-R-T-L-I-N-G, will join us next Monday. She's joining us from the Town Tonight Dad, where she's been a research analyst, but she was interviewed by our staff and found to be, I think, very good, and I interviewed her, and it's one of the best interviews I've ever done, so super impressed, and we're excited to get her on board and let Erin get back to maybe doing just, you know, one or one and a half jobs in the future. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Excellent. So, we have one closed session this evening to discuss an economic development matter. So, at this time, I'd like to thank everyone for watching this evening, as this is the end of our public business. So, I'd ask for a motion to enter into our closed session, please.
Mayor and council pursuant to 143 Statute 318.11A4, I move that we go into closed session for purposes of discussing an economic development matter.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Councilmember Robati. All those in favor of entering closed session at this time, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. We are now at in closed session, it is 9:10. We could please.